Not getting used to that. Um, we do have Pastor Brandon Pugh slated. I'm sorry? Oh, sorry. I'm not used to that one neither. Secretary, would you call the role?
Mayor Pro Tem Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Present and accounted for.
Uh, Mayor Hendrick is, uh, out of the country. Uh, we have a forum council.
Okay, very good. Uh, on to where I was. All right, Pastor Brandon Pugh is on the agenda, but I don't see him. So, uh, Councilmember Vasquez, would you lead us in a word of prayer if you would stand if you're able?
Please join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we pray that you grant us wisdom and discernment in our decision-making today. We ask that you help us lead with integrity and lead with a heart for service to our community and all of our citizens. Finally, Father God, guide us to be vessels of your peace, spreading harmony, wisdom, and uniting us in love and respect. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Thompson, we'll give some pledges.
Pledge the American flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Kansas state, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, you may be seated. Proclamations.
La pluma.
So we do have a couple of proclamations tonight, and first... So I've got Candace Montez with, uh, Project Graduation. And I believe there's a... Yeah, I believe there's a presentation first? Okay. So Candace, if y'all want to come up and do that, is it? One of these?
I was just asking if you wanted to turn the volume off.
Is she presenting to us?
Yeah, she has a power.
Okay. So we can go... This way?
Is it ready to take a hit? Okay. Okay. So does this need to say a little speech for this? I'm so sorry, I'm not a public speaker, so first of all, thank you all for allowing us to be here. We are super appreciative of being able to be recognized. We work super hard for Project Graduation. If you aren't familiar with that, it is after celebration for our graduates at Permian and OHS. Um, we have been working together trying to raise enough funds. It's about a $25,000 fundraising event that we do just to get prizes and keep this in and safe. So we did prepare this little presentation just to give you a little... Oh, view what we do. Just kind of let you know, like, what it is. No one wants that time. Yeah, no, you guys. So essentially, we do, uh, we are raising money. Um, we have met the majority of our goals. We did post our Venmo just in case anyone feels so inclined. Um, also, we do take cash and checks.
We still need donations.
We do, yeah. We do. Graduation is next Friday for us at OHS and Thursday for Permian. And that's it? That's you? I think that's you.
She said that the fundraiser becomes...
Well, I don't want to be so...
Ah, fundraiser, come on.
So we would love for you to know.
But, uh, we have prepared a proclamation. And I said, y'all, we're getting used to this thing too, so the whereas, whereas, whereas. So, uh, this is a proclamation, uh, from the city of Odessa. Whereas, Project Graduation is to provide a safe, engaging, and memorable celebration for graduates on their special night, including an environment filled with fun activities, delicious food, exciting prizes, ensuring that every senior can celebrate their achievements with peers in a secure place. And whereas, Project Graduation aims to empower parents and the community to feel confident in knowing that our graduates have a joyful and protected way to mark this significant milestone in their lives. Together, we celebrate academic success and foster lasting memories for our students and their families. And whereas, the goal of Project Graduation is to prevent tragedies caused by impaired driving, substance use, or unsafe behavior during a time of celebration. And whereas, the parents, school administrators, community organizations, and volunteers have come together to organize and support this important initiative. And whereas, Project Graduation reflects a shared commitment to the safety and well-being of our youth, offers graduates a memorable and enjoyable event in a secure environment. Now, therefore, I, so official, Raymond C. Stoker, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 22nd through 23rd, 2025, as Project Graduation Days throughout the city and urge all citizens to support and participate in this effort to ensure that our graduates enjoy a safe and sober celebration as they mark this significant milestone. So thank you for what you do. You know, I think everybody knows Project Graduation. Again, a very admirable cause of support and... They need money, come on, there was a Venmo.
Young lady.
QR code.
Young lady.
What about volunteers? Do you have volunteers? Yeah, see, volunteers? Y'all don't have anything better to do on it?
I represent Permian.
It's on the plaque right in front of you.
It's right there, but I'll write it down. I don't do any technology stuff, so... You're more than welcome. God bless y'all. Thank you for the work you do.
Yeah, so this year, if you aren't familiar with, uh, one of the new businesses we have, Urban Air is in the Music City Mall. It's the new go-kart indoor slides, lots of fun. So it's going to be a fun time, something new, different.
It is.
Big thanks to them for providing the space, but... Venmo, come on, money.
Young lady.
Cash.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Councilmember Thompson, y'all want to match? We got a matching opportunity, come on. All right. So I do have, uh, the graduates to recognize. Uh, these are, they are here with us today, so, um, as I call you up, if you will come get your certificate. So... These graduates of city employees, okay. So, thank you. So Aiden Marin from Permian. Got Clarissa Ray Deleon from Odessa High School. They're in charge, really. So Robin Paige Steadman from Permian High School. Samuel Navarrete from Odessa Collegiate Academy. Brian Lee Gardner from Permian High School. Giselle Maria Luhon from Permian High School. Ray Munoz from STEM Academy. Marquez Rodriguez from Odessa High School. Katie Ann Thomason from the Compass Academy. Donovan Vasquez from Permian High School. And Gabriel E. Enriquez from Odessa Collegiate Academy. Good man, all right, we'll take it.
It's mom.
It's mom.
Well, thank y'all. Congratulations. All right, so next we have Motorcycle and Safety Awareness Month. Martin, you want to join us? We met earlier. So we were visiting earlier, this is the...
Rider Awareness Rally, Safety Awareness for Motorcycle.
Rider Awareness Rally, and you said the 20...
The 24th.
Fourth.
May, at the, uh, BMW Hall in Midland. We have a rally, we have a CLCI meeting beforehand. Most of the guys over here on board. And, uh, what we'll do is we'll have a CLCI meeting. After the meeting, we're going to have a rally. We'll have mechanical ball. Anyways, we're going to have a mechanical ball, we have a lot of biker games. Cake tosses, stuff like that, we'll have flags. And what we're trying to do is a Permian basin, since we're privileged to be able to ride almost year-round, is, uh, you know, make sure people look out for bikes, look twice, save a life. Hollywood and Full Time Bobby, Red, Toyota, you want to come up there?
Yeah, y'all come on up.
Miss Hollywood, come on, Miss Hollywood. See, they just got married, so we got to play. This is our first chair, go ahead, y'all.
And he did say biker games, not biker games. It's a safe place to come. And, uh, we just thank y'all for allowing us to come out here, and we thank y'all for recognizing, uh, this as Safety Awareness Month. We, we are trying to get our signs out into more yards as well, so that people can know to watch out for us. We'll watch out for you as well. We know that a lot of times it might be, um, our fault too. So, uh, we're just raising awareness for everyone, and, um, it's usually a good time. So if you can make it, come on out there. And, eh, those kids need donations.
All right, thank you, and, and, and very important, I spoke the other day about, uh, traffic and, and safety and just the fact that there are more cars on our roads than, than ever before, and we all may be a little more distracted than we need to be, and so looking out for, for you all is important. So, we do have a proclamation, uh, for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, so... Start with my wherés again, told you. So the city of Odessa proclamation, whereas motorcycles are an increasingly popular means of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreational use on our roads, and whereas motorcyclists are virtually unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas a critical element in reducing injury and fatalities to motorcyclists is education about motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, and whereas I urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists to give each other mutual respect they deserve. Now, therefore, I, Raymond C. Stoker, by virtue, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Odessa, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month throughout the city of Odessa and urge all citizens to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community in order to save lives. So, thank you very much again for bringing awareness to this.
So, is the rally?
May the 24th or 25th.
Okay, everyone just get in. Here we go.
What are you trying to say?
One, two, three. One more? Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, y'all. After the proclamations, we have an opportunity for citizens' comments on non-agenda items. This is a time where any member of the public may address city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during consideration of the item. Uh, any comments on that are limited to three minutes. We can't answer back, but we can direct staff, uh, to look into it further. Do we have any, uh, comments?
Yes, Jeff Russell.
Mr. Russell.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Uh, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, I'm here today not only as a concerned citizen, but as someone who helped craft ordinance 2024-46, uh, a measure that was duly passed by the Odessa City Council through two readings and a final vote on, uh, November 14th, 2024. Uh, this ordinance was written to protect the dignity and privacy of women in public facilities, and it came from real community concern. This poli... This isn't just policy for me, it's very personal. As I shared, my own granddaughter was confronted by a biological male in the women's restroom at the restaurant where she works. She was scared, she was shaken, and she is not alone. I've heard similar stories from others in Odessa, women and girls who no longer feel safe in places that are definitely meant to be private. The Texas Legislature is debating this very issue as we speak, but the state has not acted yet, and even if it does, it doesn't excuse the city of Odessa from doing its job now. We passed the law, the Odessa City Council did its part, but the law is currently being thwarted by the city secretary's failure to fulfill her sworn duty. According to the Odessa City Charter, the ordinance takes effect only after its publication in the Odessa American. And as of today, from November 14th, 2024 to today, that still has not happened. And the public would have never known about this if it not had been for a February report from Marfa Public Radio of all places, where Mayor Hendricks stated, and I quote, "It did not become the law of Odessa. The Ts weren't crossed and the Is weren't dotted, so it was never codified." Let that sink in. We passed a law. But because someone willingly chose not to take the final step, that law was quietly buried. No notice, no debate, no transparency, just a procedural en-run around the will of the people. Question is now, who? Who made that decision? Was it simply the secretary's oversight or something more deliberate? Did she fail to publish this ordinance as required by our charter? Or was she directed to do so by some city legal staff or someone else in a position of authority? Regardless, this situation should be thoroughly investigated and reported to the public. Tonight, I tell you, if this ordinance is not published promptly as required by our city charter, I want everyone to know, and I will take this issue to court, and I will not be the only one. Our Odessa City Council was elected to lead not to allow ordinances to be quietly discarded behind closed doors. Our city secretary has a sworn ministerial duty to follow the codes and ordinances in, of this city and of our charter. This isn't about politics. It's about our charter, it's about trust, and it's about protecting those who can't always speak for themselves. I ask for each of you to do your duty, and I demand that the city secretary carries out her sworn ministerial duty. Odessa deserves better than an en-run around our city ordinances.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other?
Not under non-agenda items.
Under non-agenda items? All right. That moves us on to the consent agenda. So has everybody had time to consider consent agenda? And if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll so move, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Getting opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moves us to the regular menu here. Number six. So, this is to discuss and consider any and all action to include the city in a match for voucher program for Fix West Texas. They are seeking a $10,000 match, which will unlock $20,000 more towards a free spay and neuter voucher. So this was something, uh, I was approached about. We wanted to, uh, visit a little more and learn a bit more about the match and the program. I know there were, uh, a few people who wanted to speak on this, and we wanted to give them that opportunity. So...
Do we have several speakers? Carmen Haynes?
And on the agenda items, same rules apply, three minutes, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. My name is Carmen Haynes, and I am an Odessa resident. I'm here today to show my support for the spay and neuter voucher program for Ector County that West Texas, West, Fix West Texas is launching. Their program, if given the chance to flourish, will help our community work toward a solution while being a valuable resource for people who don't want to contribute to the problem, but they need help. Currently, our city shelter is one of the top killing shelters in the state, with only 38% of the 4,165 animals that entered the shelter last year leaving alive. These numbers are extremely disheartening. As a proud Odessan and a taxpayer, I would like to see my tax dollars invested in programs like this spay and neuter voucher program that will provide a critical resource to Odessans and will help keep pets with their families and out of our shelters. This program has the potential to have incredible short-term and long-term effects for our community. We know that prevention is the best medicine. And on average, a dog or cat can have four to six offspring per litter, with dogs being able to have two litters per year and cats up to three litters per year. This means that for every single spay and neuter surgery performed through this program, there is a tangible impact on the reduction of animals born in our community. Investing in this program now is one of the most cost-effective ways for our city to work toward life-saving solutions in the long term. Suppose this program gets the financial support it needs to be successful. In that case, it will save the city of Odessa Animal Shelter tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of dollars on the housing, feeding, and medical care for animals that have not even been born yet. We can prevent them from burdening our shelter if we choose to support programs like this one today. The people of Odessa want and deserve access to resources for the pets in our city, and I urge you to believe in and invest in our city's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Brian the lady?
He'll be a distraction unless I get an extra three minutes.
Look, he signs a card.
My name's Devon Daly, I'm with Permian Posse in Need. Mr. Morton, city council members, on behalf of my clients and the rest of Odessa residents, please do not give money to Fix West Texas because you will create the following: a lack of equal access. By allowing them to manage this voucher program, the city would effectively be choosing winners and losers in our veterinary and nonprofit communities. Local, uh, primary care veterinarians, those who have built trusted relationships with pet owners, would be excluded from the chance of participating in the voucher system. This discourages responsible pet ownership. When an owner lacks a regular vet, they are often forced to turn to more expensive emergency care. Wouldn't we be, uh, shouldn't we be encouraging pet owners to establish relationships with local vets, not steering them towards a single third-party clinic in another city with limited services? If public money is to be used, it should be distributed through an open competitive grant process available to all local groups. There's also a lack of transparency and accountability. Will they provide regular public reports on funds for transparency? Will those reports include how many people are turned away and why, including if someone was denied for services, uh, for being critical at any point or for being associated with a specific organization? Without a public third-party audit or oversight, we risk public funds being misused without recourse. Exclusion and intimidation of residents. Fix West Texas has a pattern of banning and blocking anyone who voices even mild dissatisfaction. Multiple Odessa residents have shared stories of being denied future services simply for speaking up about concerns. They mislead the pay-what-you-can practices they preach. Despite advertising a pay-what-you-can model, many, uh, clients report being shamed for not being able to pay the full amount and then denied services. One Odessa resident shared with me that she only had a $50 bill to last her until payday. She offered $20 for services. They shamed her for not giving her, uh, giving them the full $50 bill and then told her that she wasn't welcomed back. That is not compassion-driven care. It is misleading and punitive. There are geographical and financial accessibility concerns. As a nonprofit serving primarily Odessa residents, I can confirm many of our clients face real barriers, financial and logistical, to getting to Midland. Appointments require time off work, gas money, and, uh, reliable transportation, none of which are easy for families already struggling. A program claiming to serve Odessa residents must be in Odessa, uh, or it does little to address the actual needs here. Six, they have a history of pub, of public hostility towards Odessa leadership. Let's not forget that it was just nine months ago, last fall, that they publicly attacked, uh, Odessa leadership for declining to bring best friends into government operations. Why should we now, and why should they now be entrusted with taxpayer money when they've demonstrated open hostility to this very body? I urge you to reconsider this proposal. Odessa deserves a fair, inclusive, transparent approach to animal welfare, one that uplifts all local organizations, respects our residents, and keeps decisions about public funds accountable to the people. I would love to see a voucher program put in place in Odessa, but please create one that is managed by Odessa for Odessa. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Lisa Frost? Lisa Frost?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Frost, and I'm one of your members of the Odessa Animal Services Advisory Board. I've been in the animal, cat, and dog world for about 10 years now and have done everything from going out to the pastures and rescuing dogs to bottle-feeding kittens and everything in between. But what I want to talk about is the voucher program. Now, it just so happens that Midland this morning met about their voucher program. Fix West Texas gets the vouchers, and they do all the turning in and all that. But it is draining money like you would not believe. They can't keep up. It's nothing to have to write a $25,000 to $3,000 check in two, three, four weeks. So you can, that gives you an idea as to how fast this is going. But the one thing that really bothers me is there's no accountability on where these vouchers are actually used. vouchers are actually used. The city will be paying for the vouchers, but what's to say that people in the county don't end up with them? Since we don't get tax money from the county, that's all going to be on us here in Odessa. And people use other people's IDs and addresses. That needs to stop. They may live in the county, but they borrow their cousin's ID, and it's taken. Let's see, we need better paperwork turned in to us. We need proof of licensed vets to do the spay and neuter. A picture of the pet needs to be attached to the paperwork. I'd like to see a monthly statement of all the vouchers used during the month with proof that it's used on city pets, as well as the owner's name and contact information with it. The pet, the pet needs to be kept a minimum of two to three hours and checked and signed off by the vet that performed the surgery, with written approval that it is safe to be released. Animals have been released way too early after their surgeries. They've been sent home. Two kittens even were taken directly from being spayed and neutered and rabies shot up to PetSmart at two and a half weeks old. That's very dangerous for those kittens. They're too young for that. They weighed one and a third pound. Luckily, the person that had the kittens that turned in, turned them into Fix West Texas went and got them out of PetSmart, took them directly to the vet because they were already getting ill.
Three minutes are up.
I'm sorry?
The three minutes are up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Clark? She thinks there's a presentation?
So we don't necessarily have a presentation, but Karen is here, and I wanted her to come up and talk a little more about what the program looks like, what the offer is, what's...
Sure.
What are we visiting about today?
So I'm Karen Patterson. I am the executive and founder of Fix West Texas. As many of you know, we founded Fix West Texas about five years ago with the support of the city. Thanks to the city, we were able to use one of your gymnasiums and then also the SWAT vehicle building behind the police station to do our MASH-style clinics to get started. Both Midland and Odessa have something in common, and that's the overpopulation problem. It doesn't matter if you're a pet lover and have empathy for the pets, or you don't really like the pets and see this as a public safety issue. The fact is, I think we can all agree that there is an overpopulation issue. The research shows that euthanizing and adopting are not going to see our way out of the problem, but we also need a third component, which is the low-cost spay and neuter. And that's what we stepped in and created. We are the only low-cost spay and neuter vendor, as you may say, or vet clinic here in the Permian Basin. What we're proposing, or what we wanted to bring to you guys' attention, is about half, it's 52% of all of our clients are from the City of Odessa. It is a fact that, yes, our building is in between Midland and Odessa on 191. It's the cheapest piece of land we could buy, the cheapest place we could build. We're a not-for-profit. That's what we did. But we do serve 52% of all of our clients, again, from Odessa. That's about 4,000 surgical clients from Odessa each year and about 10,000 vaccination clients from Odessa every year. The difference between Midland and Odessa is the residents of Midland have a safety net. If they cannot afford our low-priced services, there is a Midland, Midland City and a Midland County voucher that will pay $70 of the $100 fee. Odessa does not have anything like that. So to help the Odessa residents, we use the bulk of our donations to provide the Pets in Need service, where they tell us what they can afford. We ask them to just pay what they can afford of the $100 fee, and we can still fix their pet. In regards to vaccinations, it's the same thing. Tell us what you can pay and microchips. Having said that, I went to a national conference and was asked to speak about what we're doing here in West Texas by PetSmart Charities, and I was able to meet a national group called Wings of Rescue. And they have a program called Operation Pit Stop, and they give grants to people that are able to match funds to be used for large breed dog spay and neuters within the community. They offered to give us $10,000 that we would then get matched. We have thus far collected $3,750 of that match, and we have received notification from Miranda Lamert-Mut Nation that they also are going to match the $10,000. So we just wanted to reach out to you guys, and we know that the city cares about animals and public safety, and with all of these national groups that are offering to give money to help your residents, we hoped that you also would choose to match that amount so we could get the full amount, turning $10,000 into $40,000 worth of vouchers, which would cover about 400 spay and neuters. So you're looking at enough to cover low-cost spay and neuters for 400 animals, which is quite amazing. Do you have any questions?
I do. To kind of address the big question in the room, what would be done to make sure that it would be City of Odessa residents using the funds?
Sure. So all of our clients, and we are a vet practice, it's a not-for-profit vet practice, and we do keep medical records. We use special software for that, and every patient is checked in, every address we have verified. So at the end of the month, what we do, what we can do is print a report, and it would give you the owner's name, the pet's name, the address, the phone number, and the email. And as a former, well, as a CPA and a former auditor, something that you could do is take that and sample that, pull 10, call them, email them, ask them if they got their pets spayed and neutered. And then that, of course, would prove that the funds were being used as intended.
Would you mind if I could speak, please?
No, that's fine.
Thank you for having us. My name is Carrie Rodriguez, and I'm actually the Community Outreach Coordinator. Karen Patterson actually hired me on to do outreach, not only with the English-speaking community, but also with the Hispanic community. This is a service that we needed to provide in bilingual languages to all the residents. I'm also a City of Odessa resident, and I've actually been able to translate every document that we have. We use strict practices with our clients. When they come in, they do show IDs. All of our veterinarians are licensed, all of our animals are checked and verified to make sure that they could undergo those surgeries. If we have to turn them away, it would have to be a medical reason that the actual veterinarian signs off on. We do not make any kind of arbitrary decision on that. I have been working all type of events in the last month. Being Cinco de Mayo, we've had a lot of events. I did park, bark, excuse me, party in the parking lot at the Coliseum. I had numerous people walk up to me, asking me for vouchers, asking me for assistance. I did the YMC Kids Day, same thing. We do a lot of events locally. I was just on the news last night, Telemundo, Channel 20, interviewed us, did a walkthrough. We're just trying to help this community, and obviously, all of the community. A big majority is of Hispanic background and culture and cannot afford even our low-cost services of $100. I've actually brought our flyers in English and Spanish, just leave it with them so you could look at it and have a better understanding of what we truly do. Thank you.
So I guess another question. This isn't a replacement for any service that Odessa's already providing. This is not...
No. No, this will just help...
In addition.
Correct. Correct. And again, what we can assure you is with your $10,000 match, we can turn that into $40,000 that's geared strictly to City of Odessa residents who need it the most. And that's why we're here, because like I said, there's a safety net, and there has been over in Midland for years and years and years, but there is just no safety net for those in Odessa who can't afford a full-service vet or even the low-cost clinic Fix West Texas.
Do you know how much Midland funds in that?
They have vouchers that are $70, so it pays $70 of the total $100.
But what, do you know their total commitment?
So their budget last year was about $250,000 is what the city normally spends, and I'm really not sure about the county. And I, yeah.
Have you reached out to the county commissioners about making a similar monetary match?
We have not. We were starting with the city, but we were hoping if the city matched, then we could use that as leverage to help the county as well. We definitely know that the county has issues, and we work a lot in Pleasant Farms. That's actually where Carrie lives. So yeah, yeah, that's definitely on our to-do list.
You live in the county, ma'am?
Yes. Yes, sir. I live right off of Pow-Pow in Pleasant Farms. And it's unfortunate, the dump site of most of these dogs cannot get spayed or neutered, and they have these litters, and people cannot do anything with them, they can't afford it, and that's where they dump them.
So once they're spayed and neutered, it's just outstanding. Well, do you do with it afterwards?
What do we do with the animal after they're spayed and neutered?
That's where they dump.
Oh, the lost ones? Well, that's a whole nother thing.
The ones that don't have a home.
So we do have a program, it's called a diversion program at Fix West Texas, and if someone has a stray or has found a stray, then what they can do is they can pay a $100 surrender fee, or what they can afford of that amount, and we vaccinate the animal, microchip, we spay and neuter, and then we use our resources to rehome the pet. We do rehome about 2,000 animals a year for our community. We are based out of the PetSmart in Midland, but also do adoptions out of the Odessa PetSmart.
I'm gonna bring you a bus load.
Yes. Unfortunately, I think a lot of us have a bus load. I'm hoping one day that...
I love pets. I have five.
Yes. I do, too.
Well, now you're not gonna get spay and neuter and vaccines.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Morton? Just, just real briefly. So can you walk me through the voucher? How's the voucher work?
So what we're, I mean, we're calling it a voucher simply because the City of Midland calls it a voucher. It's a discount. So basically, if you came in with a pet, we put you in the system, and then we create a discount. In this case, it would be called Operation Pit Stop for the program it falls under, and that discount would be applied to that bill. So that $100 off the surgery would be applied to that bill.
And where does the surgery take place? Is it in your facility?
Mm-hmm. At Fix West Texas, which we are in Midland County, but we did try to get it as close to Ector County as we could.
So they, so the citizen can't take a voucher and go to any vet that they prefer?
Not with this program.
Okay. Has this been to the, our advisory board, our Animal Control Advisory Board?
I have been to your Animal Advisory Board, and the same people are on the Animal Advisory Board, and I was told to go back to Midland where I came from. So I have not been back, and that was two years ago. I think the same people spoke here, Ms. Frost, and then, of course, the one that will speak after me.
Okay.
Susan Clark.
All right. Thank you. Well, I guess I'll, if Ms. Frost is coming up and she's on the, on the advisory board, I might ask her a question. I think the City of Odessa does provide reduced-cost spay and neuter services, and I think we'll hear different, but I think we do. I think any additional spay and neuter services are needed in the community. I just want to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts.
Sure.
So, yeah. My only comment is this. I don't know why you need our $10,000. Your website says that y'all produced $3.32 million last year in revenue and spent $2.46 million. So you guys have a lot of cash.
We don't have a lot of cash.
That's not what, that's not what your reports, your filings say.
Okay, so...
And I'm sitting here looking at them, and you got 100, a million six, 1,650,000 in assets, a negative 16,000 in liabilities.
Wait, where are you seeing this? Because this is not, I mean, I'm...
It's off the website.
Really? Off of the Fix West Texas?
Yeah.
Off a Fix West Texas website?
It's off the Texas filings for nonprofits.
Okay, so you're looking at the 990 for what year?
I'm looking at the 99424.
For 2024?
And you made, your revenue was $3,315,649.
Correct.
Expenses were $2,425,700. Net income is $857. And it just doesn't make any sense to me that this is gonna, that our $10,000 is gonna help. You guys have got a wealth of income. Our staff, and I'm pretty sure, I've talked to Kelly, I'm pretty sure we are offering, Richard, those services.
I don't believe that your residents are aware of those.
Oh, my God, it is going, well, we built a beautiful animal shelter, anybody can walk in there.
You did, and you're killing just as many animals in the beautiful shelter.
Well, that's, I mean...
Or more.
Yeah.
It's very sad.
Yeah.
Going back to the numbers, if you'll look at the numbers, we were doing a campaign, a capital campaign, and that money that you're looking at was raised for the building that we're in. It was $1.2 million that we raised from the Everyday Joe right here in our community. The $3,750 that we've raised from your residents here is, again, from the Everyday Joe. If you'd like to meet with me, I'd be happy to go over the numbers with you more.
I just don't think we need your services. Our staff is not crazy about it, and, you know, we have, we, the county issue that Councilman Vazquez addressed, we take care of the county's animals as well. And that's where most of our, Kelly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of our, many of our pets, or more of our pets, they end up in the shelter, come from the county, and then they do the city.
From what we see on Facebook, we're not doing a great job over here.
Don't, don't even use the word Facebook with me.
Well, that's where everybody's posting the lost pets. So there's a lot of them.
And they lie a lot. They lie a lot. They make up numbers.
Okay. Well, I, we appreciate you entertaining the offer.
Thank you.
No problem. We will still continue to help and serve the residents of Odessa.
Thank you very much.
We do not turn anyone away, sir.
No.
We didn't hear, we heard something different a minute ago, so, okay. I said, she said.
Lot of hearsay.
Hell, I'll Facebook.
That wasn't Facebook. Susie?
Susan Clark?
Yeah, well, she said she gets it off Facebook. Wrong place to get here.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pro-Ten Stoker. I like the way that sounds. Mr. Morton and the Honorable Odessa City Council Members. I'm Susie Clark, the City of Odessa Animal Advisory Board Chair. Every animal that comes to the Odessa Animal Services has an owner. There are many definitions of this word stray, but I like the one to travel along a route that was not originally intended, or to move outside a limited area. The majority of these animals seldom have any ID. Many of the animals come in ill with a zoonotic disease, which in simple terms means an illness that can be transferred to both animals and humans. Distemper is not zoonotic, but will wipe out your entire shelter. The majority of these animals are unvaccinated, lack proper vaccinating, they're intact, and they are poorly cared for, making them at risk. You let these animals leave for any reason while ill, you continue to spread these deadly diseases that are contagious throughout your community. Odessa Animal Services is not an animal hospital. It cannot and will not house sick animals and jeopardize the young, the healthy, the elderly, and the improperly vaccinated. We want to do our best to get these animals out. Odessa Animal Services runs the facility by following the Association of Shelter Veterinarian Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelters. You cannot house sick animals with healthy ones, nor can you mingle and overcrowd a kennel. It's already a highly stressful environment. Every animal that enters that facility is tested. There's absolutely no other way to maintain a healthy shelter, even though some of the worst diseases linger testing negative, when in reality, they are positive. That is devastating and jeopardizes every life in that shelter. We have brought mandatory spay... We have brought mandatory spay and neutering, microchipping, proper licensing for litters, and breeding ordinance to the city. And when they enter the facility by those ordinances, we can ensure that is done, plus vaccinations. In the beginning and in the end, that responsibility lies solely on the owner. And this, if the city chooses to begin a voucher program, that money belongs to the taxpayers and should be spent with local veterinarians in Odessa. Odessa Animal Services has implemented spay and neuter clinics, um vaccinations, and we also have semi-annual vaccination and microchip clinics uh where you have the luxury of remaining in your car. Also, our, um, our new clinics for spay and neuter have been sold out. The shelter is extremely short-staffed and underpaid. Any funds considered should go to better and expand our own programs and pay shelter employees. If Karen Patterson, Fix West Texas, wants to give out free vouchers for spay and neuter and create their own program, that's great. That is the job of a nonprofit to operate charitable or socially beneficial purposes to provide services and programs that a municipality cannot or does not offer. We already offer those services. Um, and so many cities in West Texas have zero help, and they are struggling horribly. They are a nonprofit low-cost spay and neuter. They have pay what you can, or free, et cetera. Those services are already available now, and they have some services that you-
Three minutes are up.
May I?
Okay, oh, my goodness.
Go ahead, finish your thought.
Okay, thank you. They also have services where you can volunteer for them. And you have to volunteer to get those services, and it's a very lucrative business. They receive their funding in many various ways and by the best friends animal organizations, and the city of Odessa absolutely does not. You cannot rescue or adopt or spay and neuter your way out of the animal crisis. The people that are going to fix their animals will. The people that need help the most may never get it. Low-cost or free vouchers are not income-based and they are not need-based. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Rest to be recognized.
All right, Councilmember, come in.
Thank you very much. Just, just a couple of thoughts and a lot of this that we've heard, but um, I think Odessa, we might just look at things on the voucher system down the way, and where I'm going from with this is that the Midland residents uh actually can apply online for voucher assistance. And then they're picked up at the Midland Animal Control. It's a seventy-dollar voucher. Um, Odessa, we don't, we don't have anything like that, do we, Kelly?
No, we have the low-cost spay clinic that we started in February.
Okay.
And the, the council wants to apply a voucher system.
Okay.
To really our program.
She's gonna come up?
Kelly, would you mind coming up if, if we're gonna talk to her?
It's me and the chief. So we started our low-cost clinic in February of this year. We do advertise for it. Um, and it's been going real well. We've been full pretty much every time we do it. Right now, it's once a month. We want to expand to twice a month. And the only thing stopping me right now is the number of employees that I have. Uh, our veterinarian that does our alterations for adoptions that we've had, she's been servicing the community for twelve to fourteen years. And so now she's doing the, the, the low-cost clinic that we are offering. Uh, it's a flat rate, hundred and ten dollars. Doesn't matter what size of dog, type of dog, breed, it doesn't matter. She'll do it. If it has breathing issues, she doesn't care. We get it done. And so there's no cap on that type of thing. We do go through and make sure it's Odessa citizens that are doing it. If I had the voucher program strictly for the shelter, we can apply it to the Odessa citizens. And I would love to be able to do that.
Kelly, stand by. Let me just finish the thought there. Um, and recognize, recognizing um Fix West Texas, let's, let's point out that right now, today, to Odessans, what's available is a Pets in Need Fund. They have that set up. They have a pay what you can afford program set up. Uh, volunteer opportunities, if you do volunteer in the kennel, that type of thing. While the surgery is being done, you can get the free service. So that's already all available. Um, if we ever would go down that road or look at that, my, I would certainly like to look at an agreement and a contract. I would certainly like to have the Animal Services Committee just give it a look, just to be fair to them. Cause this responsibility kind of would be dumped on them for administrative control. This has to be done properly in the voucher system. But the um, I guess that would be the last point, is looking at financial assistance or voucher system if, if we needed it so that these vouchers could be used for those who need, for Odessans. That's my thought.
Well, I agree, and I think that's the, the-
Yeah, but we don't need fifty-two percent. We need a hundred percent Odessa use. If we give them.
Well, no, she's just saying out of their clients. I, I, again, this wasn't to replace anything, and this is just a, in addition. I mean, as you said, you, you're short-staffed and underpaid, and there, there's opportunity. And so if they're willing to, to chip in and do it, you know, if it's not funded through us, okay, great, but bring awareness, we can-
Well, as Susie said, they already offer those programs, and they've already offered those programs. And so uh, the bottom line is, the program could be better served internally because we have an internal auditor. We don't need to justify. All they gotta do is look at my books.
Yeah.
So we don't need an inter-local agreement, and the money is kept in-house. We'll use it in-house like we're supposed to use it.
Can you approach Pitwings or whoever they are to get matching funds for twenty thousand dollars?
No, sir.
Why?
It's a best friends organization, and they want more than just to donate money to this, to us. Anytime you talk to a best friends organization or Fix West Texas or anybody, they like, they like to use the euthanasia rate. Well, they don't tell you what that rate is and what caused that rate. They know the percentages. They know the majority of those euthanases are sick animals. Aggressive animals that I cannot adopt out because it's a liability to the community. Injured animals, owner surrender, they're requesting the animals to be euthanized. They'll pay for it to be euthanized. That's what they don't tell you the percentage breakdown is of that large percentage. They just want to use, oh, y'all only save thirty-eight percent. Well, that's what the truth is. The truth is what it is. I can't help what the euthanasia rate is. I have state laws that tells me I cannot allow sick animals in with healthy animals. But nobody tells you that. It's a state law, and Dan can tell you that. So there's, I'm a government entity. I'm not a sanctuary. I'm not a rescue. I am the end of the line. There is no chance for that animal except adoption. That's it.
So it'd be better for you, for somebody else to be providing-
Oh, we're not stopping them. If they want to spend their money to go over there, I'd be happy for them to, anybody. But there's also other rescues that you could donate that money to.
Right.
You know, it doesn't have to be just Fix West Texas. It could be any of the rescues, and you open that door, okay. I, I've got three or four rescues that already come to the shelter and pull animals from us. Donate it to them. I'd be happy, but start with us. We ought to be number one. We want to be the number one. We want to improve things.
All right, call the question.
Ain't you my pastor, Laura?
I am. I don't admit it.
I had never got to meet you.
That's true.
Yeah, we never been for the interview.
That's true, and yes, I am. Thirty-three years. I claim it. He don't, he don't.
All right, any other discussion on this?
Call the question.
Call the question.
All right.
I'm making, I'm making a motion that we uh decline the, approving the inter-local agreement. Oh, hang on a second. Where are we?
One and inter-local agreement.
I know. Where is it, Dan?
Number six.
Six.
Yeah, number six. Yeah. Yeah, I'd make a motion that we uh not enter into an agreement with the voucher program with Fix West Texas and deny the ten thousand dollar match.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
There we go. Number seven, consider the inter-local agreement for teen court program. The inter-local agreement for the teen court program entered into between the city of Odessa. So, Richard?
It's mine.
I was gonna say, let me look around.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Um, this is basically an annual contract that we uh are requested to sign with Teen Court. Teen Court, as you know, um, works with uh our teens that uh that have, are serving or ticketed for juvenile misdemeanors, and Teen Court is an alternate for them. And so the city provides not only funding, but we also provide uh office space for the Teen Court Administration. We work in concert with the school district who provides some funding, and the county who provides some funding and allows the court cases to happen at the court. So this is just that annual agreement.
Any discussion on Teen Court?
If no further discussion, I move that we accept the um, to approve the inter-local agreement with Teen Court. Second.
Motion and a second. I do want to say with Rebecca here, thank you for all your help picking up trash. Uh, Teen Court has been one out every weekend alongside most of us, all of us. Um, amongst other things, I, I think it's, I, I was either a victim or a, a learner from Teen Court in my younger days, so um, I think it's a great program.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Five-year? Okay.
My bad.
Do you have a motion and a second? Uh, all in favor?
All in favor.
Any opposed? Same side? Motion passed. All right, move on to the public hearings. These are the fun ones you get to read. All right, we are going to open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by J.D. Elsner Holdings LLC for a zone change from FD Future Development District to LI Light Industrial District on Lot Five, Block One, Oil Patch Edition, being eleven point thirty-two acres. City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas, generally located on the north side of East Murphy Street, approximately five hundred feet east of Market Avenue. This is the first approval. Ms. Shaughnessy?
Thank you. Um, so the applicant is requesting for a zone change. Uh, this is another property that uh came into city limits and did not get a zoning. So it was zoned as future development. They're asking for light industrial. They will be coming in later on for a uh, uh, application for an SCP to be able to do workforce housing in this area. Uh, right now, we are just doing the uh zoning, so right now it's just the light industrial zoning. Um, and staff did route it out. We don't see any objections as you can see what is there. It does match with the light industrial. There's still a lot of area that is not um zoned, but the area does follow that. PNZ did get a little confused at that time just because when we were talking about this project, they thought that light industrial could not have manufacturer homes. This is not the case. This will come back later on as workforce housing. That's a completely different application and process. So, and you'll see that probably like within a month. That will come back to you guys. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of a zone change from future development to light industrial. I am not open for any questions.
Any questions? All right, at this time, I will now open a public hearing. Okay, well.
You already read it.
Keep opening. Are there any public comments? Uh, anybody wishing to speak on this zone change? Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing. So, any further discussion? So I will entertain a motion to do what's next.
So move.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Motion approved. Number nine, so this one-
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim? Can I recommend that uh, that we remove this from the table?
All right, got a motion to remove this from the table? Do I have a second?
Second, Ed.
All right, motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, so we will be removing this from the table. Uh, we will be opening a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Imperative Chemical Partners, Inc. for a zone change from Future Development District to HI Heavy Industrial District on a forty-three point four three six acre tract in Section thirty-two and forty-one, Block forty-two dash S, dash two, dash S, T N P T Y dot co survey. City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas, generally located on the south side of West Murphy Street, approximately six hundred and thirty feet wide, six hundred and thirty west of Maurice Road. Ms. Shaughnessy?
Thank you again. Um, so this item that we have in front of us is that um, the property had already been in use uh prior to, but now we have a new owner. So it was one of those properties that came into the city that um was being used, but did not have the zoning design to it. So now that we do have a new owner, they're trying to be in compliance with everything. And in addition to that, they're trying to grow their business. So part of that is that they now want to prepare for their growth of what their company might become. So we're, they're requesting to uh, the zoning to be heavy industrial. The reason why is because the property does have a spur very close to it. So they want to be able to utilize this, and they will be doing a presentation right after me in order to go more in-depth of what that means. Um, and so we did do some analysis in there and, and did talk to the fire department, did talk to a lot of departments, um, even to utilities to see if, you know, what are the, the risks that we can possibly see, especially within the area. Um, we, we feel comfortable with allowing them to utilize that uh property as a heavy industrial um for their future growth. Therefore, we do recommend, after carefully reviewing it and talking within our departments, that we're comfortable with them um approving it to move into uh heavy industrial. However, our commissioners, our PNZ board, did not feel comfortable with the um heavy industrial use. So they did not vote on it, and instead they were requesting for you guys to consider tabling the request. Um, so that's why we asked last week to be able to table this, to give the owners of this property to be able to come and speak to you guys of what it really means for them and what they're doing on this property and how it will benefit the city. Um, and so basically now, if you guys have any questions to me, or if we can move to their presentation, and then if you have any questions to me.
Okay, do we have any questions versus staff? Okay. Do we open the public hearing to let them present? All right. So now we're gonna open the public hearing on the matter, and that will allow the, the presentation. Come forward, please.
Thank you. Click with this. All right. Uh, first off, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, council members, city manager, Ms. Shaughnessy?
May I have your name for the record?
Oh, Ryan Havens, CEO of Imperative Chemical Partners. Um, you know, I'm excited to be able to present. I think through the planning and zoning process, we probably didn't do a great job of being able to educate of what our organization is, who we are, what we stand for. And so I think the goal of, uh, for, for me today and for our organization is to better educate on who we are, what we do, what the intent of the use of the property is, um, and how that can both benefit us as an organization, as well as the community and city of Odessa. So appreciate the time and look forward to, to further answering questions at the end as well. So first and foremost, uh, So, first and foremost, you know, want to speak to Imperative and what our values are. For me, born and raised in Odessa, Texas, spent the majority of my life here, graduated from Odessa Permian, similar to some of the graduates earlier in two thousand and three, so a little bit older. That afforded me an athletic background to continue athletics on to Baylor University on a full athletic scholarship, which provided me the opportunity to get a business degree to come back and join a very small family business in two thousand and seven. That family business was founded in two thousand and five by my father Wade Havens, both my mother Janice Havens and father Wade Havens, born and raised in Odessa, Texas, so longtime residents of Odessa. And I think you'll see that fill throughout our entire organization as some of my colleagues are also Odessa natives. The organization ultimately founded in two thousand and five by my father Wade Havens. We've had significant growth since. We don't articulate this growth graph, both through organic and acquisitions to promote revenues or anything of that sort, but also, you know, from really a headcount perspective. This organization was started by my father with one other employee at the time, which was an uncle of mine. That was two employees back in two thousand and five. Today, we employ over nine hundred and fifty resident, or employees. A hundred of those are actually centered in Odessa, Texas, despite the fact that we don't actually have a facility in Odessa, which we're aiming here to change today. As I flip forward, you can see an overall footprint of where our facilities and where our operations stand. We are actually the fourth largest provider in U.S. land in our space. We're the largest privately held. So, who we can compete against is our global, global public competitors that, you know, obviously don't desire or, you know, aim to pour into their local communities like privately held organizations are. So, as I mentioned, we don't have any current facilities in Odessa, Texas. We actually have four in Midland. Despite the fact that we have a hundred Odessa-based employees, they all scatter to Midland facilities or other Permian Basin-focused facilities. And with this process and with an approval of a zone change, we can reposition those employees to be more Odessa-focused, in addition to creating more jobs, which I'll speak to in just a minute. Again, without the current facility that Ms. Shaughnessy spoke about, and that I'll get more in detail about, we still feel like we do a hell of a job pouring into the Odessa community, not only through our support financially, manpower, providing resources, or just committing and helping campaign different projects through a variety of different nonprofits and organizations that are designed to help the community, but also through our business transactions, through suppliers, vendors, some which allow us, enable us to be as effective as we are in our business today. With the expansion into Odessa and utilizing the facility of the subject property, we feel like we can certainly enhance that. We also actually service Odessa-based customers as well, the most notable, Latigo Petroleum, owned and operated by Kirk Edwards. Some of our vendor facility, or vendor partners are here today in support of the type of operations that we run. But, you know, I think they'll have a chance to speak here in a moment. I'm going to flip ahead to, as Ms. Shaughnessy said, this site has been in place for decades. It's been utilized in a similar fashion of what we intend to use. So, we don't desire to really do anything different, certainly on the front end. As we can expand and scale and further consolidate facilities, we expect to utilize this facility in a more notable way. But, as you can see in this first picture here on the left, our first and foremost opportunity to create value for ourselves, as well as the community, is to utilize the rail, both the spur and the additional lines that are on the property to transload materials that we can bring in in bulk on the rail, transload those to truck, and distribute those to our end-use customers or other facilities that are currently in motion. Over time, we want to see that phase move into where we can store some materials on site to build up further inventory, and then over time, building up a more holistic regional operation center. With that, just starting in day one, that will create dozens of jobs, or transition dozens of jobs from other facilities, as well as new creation of jobs to manage the rail facility and such. We expect that to transition to hundreds of jobs over time. As I mentioned, we have nine hundred and fifty. We could estimate upwards of a quarter of our employee base repositioning to this Odessa-based facility. So, we're excited to create that, not only for employment within Odessa, but obviously the benefits for our organization, as well as the city, that come through the tax, through water use, you know, the, all the, all the other benefits of utilizing vendors, as well as shifting, shifting those benefits again from primarily Midland to Odessa, but also just the creation of additive jobs. Through the process, we also learned that there were some concerns from some of our neighbors and community. We appreciate those, we respect those, and I think we've taken committed effort over the last month or so to not, to not only understand those concerns, but to work through those and make sure that we are being as good a partners as we can. We feel very confident in what our current processes are through the various environmental entities and situations to appreciate and protect the groundwater, not only the use, but potential contamination, as well as, you know, air quality and other concerns. And the one thing that I'm proud to say, through our core values of integrity, service excellence, stewardship, and safety, is that we don't have to employ any new tactics. We don't have to employ any new processes or standards to be fully and compliant with what we need to operate this facility safely and effectively. And through not only our, our own processes, but the third parties that we employ to safeguard and double-check our processes, we feel very confident in. And so, you know, our ask is that with the approval of this process and the rezoning, that we can utilize this facility to benefit ourselves, as well as the community of Odessa. So, with that, would like to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for?
You got a lot of information here on your safety. What is, what is your rating for safety?
Yeah, so, great question. So, we, we are actually judged and graded by various institutions. I mean, one of the primary factors we look at is our TRI, our Total Recordable Incident Rate. Quite frankly, we can't work and operate for the majority of our customers. If that's above one point zero, we always operate and have a consistent track record of being under one. We also look at our employer modification rate, which our insurance companies look at. We always have a satisfactory rating there. And then, there's various other institutions. KJ Kyle Johnson, our Director of Risk Management, that leads our HSE DOT programs is here. He may have some more specific information.
You say you're rating was point one?
Lower than, lower than one point zero on TRI, yes. And that.
Well, I was in the chemical business.
I understand. So, you, you can appreciate what that, those metrics are.
Can you flip back one deal and let me see your containment? So, you doing secondary containment on everything, right? On all your, all tanks, all?
That's accurate. So, we're fully compliant with EPA's SBCC regulations, which is a secondary prevention process. So, if the actual container itself fails, we have secondary containment. It holds up to one and a half times the volume of the, of the largest container in that facility. And that's how we operate through, through all of our facilities organizationally.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Impressed?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr.
Donald Murray?
My name is Donald Murray. I'm the Vice President of Blakely Construction. We've been in Odessa and Ector County for sixty-five years. We have an annual payroll of twenty-three million, and I represent three hundred families in Ector County. I voiced my concerns here on the twenty-second on these two issues and what have you. In the last couple of weeks, they gave me the opportunity to do a little bit of research and what have you. And just, it's probably some things that you guys already know and what have you. So, I'm going to go ahead and just lay it out there. The risk screening environmental indicators next to county are up thirty percent in the last five years. That's information from the total release inventory. That's airborne, water, and solids. It doesn't have any, there's no screening or anything. It tells me what the modeling is, how it affects the populace, or anything like that, what the toxicity levels are. I'll move on to the TECQ. There are currently twenty-four active cleanups inside the boundaries of Loop three thirty-eight. This is water contamination. Ten of those are federal, state, or superfund sites. Two are in the city. These sites have been going on since nineteen eighty-seven. That's a long time, guys. Specifically in the area of Forty-Ninth, there's two within just a few, just a little bit of our place. The Homeco International Site located at twenty-one, twenty-two Maurice, which is right down the street from these folks. And it's been there since nineteen ninety-three, and it's chlorinated solvents. And then, the Fractech Site Cleanup is located at nine eighty-six Maurice, and it's polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons and total petroleum hydrocarbons. This site's been there since two thousand and thirteen. These sites are within six and eight tenths of a mile, respectively, of my property. I adjoin this property, if you go back to the location thing. As a matter of fact, the exclusion zone takes in my primary water source. Regarding these locations, they're within a half a mile of some of the oldest neighborhoods in Odessa. And our predominant winds are out of the southwest, which place these neighborhoods at risk of minimal or minor emissions caused by normal venting and daily operations. In the event of a catastrophic release, fire explosion, and we didn't plan what happened out here at Permian Container last year. But, in the case of that, in a catastrophic release, our hospital is within two miles, right downwind. If these things are rezoned, there's no control, with the exception of what Ryan's doing, of how these chemicals are handled, stored, and what have you. I think you guys have a bit of responsibility to all the citizens in this community and what have you. If you destroy my water source, those numbers I just gave you, we're out of here. The other thing that I want to point out is, on this site, there are two point seven miles of rail. That'll accommodate somewhere north of a hundred and eighty-three tankers, railroad tankers. And gentlemen, that represents somewhere around five and a half million gallons of fluid. So, if there is a leak, or if there is a fire, you can bet you're going to pollute a lot of water and put, and harm a lot of folks. I appreciate your time.
I do have a question.
All right.
So, I notice you noticed the, the green fumes out there from the recycling plant right there, the metal recycling plant. I notice you haven't complained about this at all, but yet, that consumes that whole area you're talking about down there constantly. And you, if you would have been complaining, then the TECQ would have shut them down from burning all that plastic that they're burning over there. That gas alone, I, I live, that alone pollutes everything in my neighborhood. So, the reason I'm asking this is, you're complaining about one, but you're not complaining about the other.
Let me ask you.
That puts more stuff in your ground. That metal is seeping into your water table, but yet, you've not complained once about them, one.
Did you complain about it?
I did. I do. I've called them out three or four times to get them to quit burning. I've called the fire department, but yes, sir, I have.
Did you ask me to join in your efforts?
No, sir. I didn't know you were, were there, so.
And you're sure that I haven't complained about it?
Pretty sure.
Not to the city?
Because I know that you would have shut them down.
I don't think that's in the city, is it?
No, it's in the county.
Okay. I wouldn't have much business coming to the city complaining about something that's in the county, Wes.
But, that's so close to you.
It is. And we're concerned about all of it.
So, but that's what I'm saying. That's already poisoning that whole area. Your water's already contaminated from that metal, all that metal on that ground. There's nothing to catch that, even though it's in the county. It's still technically right there at the city.
We monitor our water, and we're not seeing contaminants from that at this time.
But, I'm just letting you know that that's what's there.
That's fine. We can join forces on that one if you'd like.
And I'm sorry. I mean, I, I understand, but stopping one business while another one's polluting makes no sense to me.
Which is fine. I, I, I don't have the floor much longer, but if you'd like to join forces on that one, I'd be glad to join you.
Because I'm asking.
No, I, we have complained about it. I don't know that TCEQ's been out there, but we are concerned about all that area.
Yes, sir.
You'll see me here on the next item. All right?
One more question.
All right?
Is there any record of Imperative having caused a leak or any type of?
No, sir. I did some research. Ryan's got a solid business. He really does. And the, in the pictures he showed up there with his containments around his tanks, his information is spot on. My concern is not the tankage that's in the containments. My concern is the rails, the rail cars coming in. Because when you hook them up, take them loose and what have you, gentlemen, we've been in this business for forty-five years. This is not a matter of if it's going to happen. We've all seen it. It's when it's going to happen. And hopefully, it doesn't happen. I pray it doesn't happen.
All right. Thank you.
Jake Watkins?
Good evening. Mayor Protem, council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Jake Watkins. I'm the General Manager of Impulse Electric and a neighbor to Imperative Chemical Partners. And over the many years of working with him, they are by far the best company we've had the privilege of working with in over thirty years. Their safety standards are at the top of our industry and is one of their top priorities. I personally have been out in the field countless times, in locations and in their facilities, and experienced firsthand their safety standards. They also are a big component of giving back to this community hugely. They are the title sponsor of the main, the West Texas Gifts of Hope. And what West Texas Gifts of Hope does is provides free services to people that are coming in when they're getting cancer treatments in their time of biggest need. Imperative ensures that they have the money to be able to do so. So, they also build up their, their team members. I've seen, seen that many times, school leadership event. They're building up their team members, men and women, making them better. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Also, as a neighbor, let me add this. We have well water, not city water, that we have employees that live in our facility that bathe with the water, that drink the water. We test the water, and it is all safe. Any questions?
Any questions? All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Larry Robinson?
Good evening, Councilman. Secretary and Attorney. Could I provide a handout for these gentlemen? What I want to talk about a little bit here today is the wind, and I think it'll answer one of Chris Haney's questions about the recycling and the metal place and why he didn't come forward. The wind normally blows out of the southwest. Those windrows show how it, how it blows. I'm going to say probably seventy percent of the time, and these are charted over nineteen years. So, anything in that corner of Odessa emits all the way over Odessa, spans the whole city of Odessa. I love his prospects on using the rail siding and all the things they do, but it's just kind of in the wrong place to be handling so much chemicals that could waft through there and cause problems. I'll give you all a minute to look at that. But, that, that is straight from the weather center, and that's over, I believe that's over nineteen years period. I've been back forty, fifty years. It hasn't changed. The wind comes from the southwest, and it migrates from there to the northeast, and that covers all of Odessa. On April third, planning and zoning met in this room. And you can go to your packet and see page thirty-one, and they voted this down. They said no. They had seven protests filed, and they voted no. And, and was rendered by the board. The protest, seven protests were turned by mail. It comes to me as a great surprise that we're in here, in this room again. I stand here as a member of the Odessa public. I stand here to protest for all of Odessa, but most especially all Odessans living downwind of this proposed chemical handling project and downstream. I do not understand how vote by the PNZ was not adhered to. I must ask, what is the duty of this board? Why was their vote voided? The notice sent to adjoining property owners did not include the zoning heavy industrial uses as prescribed in PNZ's own letter. This in itself should invalidate some of the procedures that is now used by PNZ personnel. And moving on, in the, talking about wind, the author Friday Night Lights once presented the question, if Houston is called the armpit of Texas, what is Odessa? once presented the question, if Houston is called the armpit of Texas, what is Odessa called? Everybody here knows that, they've heard it. The placement of a similar chemical provider in southeast Odessa opened the door for comments branding Odessa as smelly even further in eighteen. Texas Monthly contributor Christopher Hooks repeated Odessa residents analogy that Odessa smelled like a dog's derriere gland. So Commissioner Greg Simmons went to investigate and found the source on Pronto Street. Commissioner Simmons started a movement to create a chemical ordinance in the county. I don't know if he furthered that or not, but this smell was described as dead fish, decaying shrimp, affected almost all of the population of Odessa, especially downwind and to the north of the discovered site. Our predominant wind current carried both noxious and toxic emissions across the greater Odessa. We need to let the no made by P N Z board stand. This could probably be resolved by the landowner through creation of a chemical, chemical related designation, a special use clause, or limitation on it. As Mr. Moore said, all this product comes in in tank cars, and there's been lots of spills over the years. I've studied that property the last couple of years. It, it had a lot of containers, a lot of leaks, a lot of toxic laying on the surface as recently as a year ago. And I have pictures and I have photographs all the way back to nineteen fifty-five on this property. Uh, but the chemical related use clause needs to be in there. That would ensure that the Odessa does not have to endure these noxious and toxic odors as a result of a yes decision on this current resolution made by this city council. A no vote is in order for this resolution as it is now written and coded.
Time is up.
Thank you very much.
Michael Ashton.
Do we not have a chance to ask a question?
Now, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Oh, sorry, well, Mr. Robinson?
Larry.
Ms. Shaughnessy, can you step up as well?
Mr. Robinson.
Larry.
Yeah, Mike, if you'll give me one second, we'll get his questions answered.
Yeah.
They wanna ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Robinson made reference that the P N Z decision was voted down. We, in other words, I'm trying to make sure I understand where you're coming from. You're saying the P N Z voted not to go further with this application for this site to be?
Yes, that's what I stated, it's in page sixty-one.
And my question to you then, Ms. Shaughnessy, is what is the legal, um, process that the company that requested it, even though the P N Z turned them down, what can they further do?
So it still comes to city council, because they're a recommending body.
Okay.
And they recommended to, for you guys to table it.
Which is their, their right to do so?
Yes.
Okay.
But to answer your question, I'd look for an amendment to appease the problems on it. And I think it's a very good industry for Odessa, good use of the property, all except for the keg, the chemicals and the possibility of releases that would cover the complete of Odessa, that much chemical. And they, they advertise downhole, surface, uh, pipeline, midstream, a little bit of chemicals there. Lots of solv- solvents, lots of toxic thing, lots of mixing. So, I, I don't know exactly what, what their properties are, but I know there's a lot of dangerous chemicals, and I know if you live in Odessa, that when, when that release was made out in east Odessa on Pronto Street, I think everybody smelled it for weeks, months, if not six months to a year. And, and that's just an indication. And the fire on eighty-seventh street, that was totes and the to- the plastic material itself was toxic. And as I'll bring up here in a moment, uh, there was a house bill, made it through, thanks to Mr. Landgraf. Leamington, the number of totes that can be left on the ground to fifty beyond that, but it, it hasn't gone to the senate yet, so it's not a law. But we're talking about containers out there, a whole trains. There's four railroad tracks out there, uh, you know, quarter, half a mile long, parked beside each other, and lots of potential for leaking and, uh, and accidents. And, I mean, they're fairly close together, and it is an old facility. And I mean, it's had railroad tracks in it, and the tracks were put in there. Uh, they're dated back to nineteen forty-five, and all the creosoted timbers go back that far or further. They were put in there used by the prior company that was in there. But, uh, the problem, the city looked at buying the property, but the property had, on top of other things, it had a lot of problems. And, uh, th- those problems, I didn't feel like the city wanted. I mean, I studied this, I was out there probably twenty times in two or three months on the property. Dead birds, floating oil pits, that, you know, accumulation, totes, rotted, open, leaking. Uh, lots of, lots of issues out there that I didn't think the city would want ownership. Now, I'm glad somebody bought it, though, and I hope they find a great utility in it, but I don't think Odessa deserves to have a chemical factory out there. If it's north of Odessa, beyond Loop three thirty-eight, nobody in Odessa would ever know about it. Any, any discharges would waft out into the country. But as it is now, any discharges or emissions would come straight over the proper, of all of Odessa, all the schools, all the hospitals, we're in a direct line. Now, it didn't matter when that yard was built, it was a pop yard for golf back into the fifties. They had old dirty pipe over it, it was called Railroad Ty Ranch, had a hundred and forty acres, old dripping oil pipe on it before. And then, then it was taken over by a couple of other people, and most of that was just bulldozed back into the ground, and it still remains there today.
Larry, no disrespect, thank you for all that. I was just wanting to make sure that, based on your comment about the P N Z voting it down, that I wanted to understand from Ms. Shaughnessy, she, she oversees them, uh, what rights now the, this company Imperative Chemical Partners had.
Right.
And she answered my question, so thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you.
You bet.
Larry, just to, Mr. Robinson, just as a, just so you know, appreciate the work that you did on this, but my research says this is incorrect. This, this information, my research says this is incorrect. The, if you go and look, prevailing wind in Ector County is from the southeast, not the southwest.
I said, from the southwest, look at it.
I said southeast.
That's correct, check with the weather service.
I did. Prevailing wind in Ector County is from the southeast.
Print your own out, that's, that's off of their site.
So's my information.
Okay.
I think you've got some misinformation.
To be clear, planning and zoning didn't vote it down, they voted to send it to us to figure out?
So they, they kept on saying that they were voting it down, but what they stated, their vote.
What did it get voted in, planning and zoning?
That's when I asked them, and they said, they're recommending for you guys to table it. And I repeated it.
So they didn't, they didn't vote it down?
Yes, so that's what, that was their recommendation.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Well, that's the word he used.
Mayor Protem.
I just repeated the word they used.
They essentially passed the buck on to y'all.
Right.
That's exactly what has occurred.
That, that's fine, but that doesn't mean that it was voted down.
No, but that's the word Mr. Mr. Robinson used that word, and so I repeated it. I just wanna make sure y'all understood it as well.
Clarification?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
There was a couple of remediations done on that project, and that ground was cleared down there. They would not have bought this if that was not the case. So, um, I appreciate Mr. Robinson doing all of this, but when, I'm in the remediation business, so when somebody does something like that, and it gets an all-clear, that's, that's a good indication that somebody has taken care of that to get it cleaned up, so.
Well, I'll remind the council also, Mr. Haney, you may remember this, that that's where our former mayor wanted to put our inland port, that, and buy that property before we even had the inside, the site inspected. And we found out that there were, there were some issues, and then we, and then so, for what we were paying for, we decided not to, not to buy it, and because the people weren't gonna do what they're supposed to do. So, anyway, that's just what I remember.
Yeah, and so, anyway, I, I saw the reports on the remediation out there, so it's been done.
It's given me.
FracTech is east of Imperative, where you guys are going to?
South.
South of, FracTech was south of where they wanna be right now, right?
Yep.
I mean, they had a bunch of chemicals.
They had a bunch of chemicals too, but they had concrete poured, just like everybody else's done, so.
All right.
Anyway, thank you.
Mike, you wanna?
Sorry.
We didn't forget a bunch.
I think everybody, the thing I wanted to say has been said, but I have property right way in that same area, and, uh, the wind does blow from, you can look at the runway out there at Slaymar, you can delve the long runway, the wind blows from the, from the southwest. I mean, just, also, there's been a, uh, uh, House Bill thirty-eight sixty-six has been passed by the, uh, House of Representatives and is going to the senate on this fire that they had out north of town. And they're, this is going to the senate for approval, and, uh, uh, because of the fire. And, uh, that's about, and I'm in agreement with, with Larry and, and Donald and.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Ashton?
In our water, if it gets contaminated, I guess we'll have to move somewhere else. I have thirty-four acres to the west and to the south, to the east and to the south, button up to this property.
Okay, thank you.
No other cards on this side?
No other cards on this. So, any other public comment? If not, we will close the public hearing. And?
Mr. Protem, this is in my, my district, and I would like to make the motion that we approve.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion to approve.
I just didn't hear you.
Yes, sir.
From Councilmember Haney, do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Councilmember Conell, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
He's still up?
All right, number ten, I need a motion to remove this item from the table, so we can consider it.
Mr. Haney, you back to the motion, you must have removed?
Yeah, I would like to remove, I'm sorry, you cut my glasses. Um, I would like to make a motion to remove this from the table, Mr. Protem.
Motion to remove, do I have a second?
Shit.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Can we just say, P T, hey, P T?
We're working all this out. Uh, so we will remove from the table, item number ten, and this is a public hearing to consider the approval of a request by S thirty-one B forty-two LLC for a zoning change from F D Future Development District to L I Light Industrial District on a forty-one point forty-four acre tract. Is my time up, do I? I'm situated in the southwest quarter of section thirty-one, block forty-two, township to south Texas, and Pacific Railway Company Survey, Ector County, Texas, generally located on the east side of southwest Loop three thirty-eight, approximately a hundred feet south of West Murphy Street. Ms. Shaughnessy?
Thank you again. I did wanna state that this is the second reading for this item. Um, it got pulled from, it had originally gotten approved on April eighth of twenty twenty-five, and then it got pulled last time, and, uh, the applicant wasn't here, so that's why we ended up tabling it to today's meeting, and the applicant is here today. So, uh, just as a reminder of what we're talking about, this is a property that's adjacent to the property that we just spoke about. So it's another one that came in as a future development. They're actually requesting, uh, the zoning to be light industrial, so it's less. Um, they're, uh, proposing, I believe there are thirteen different parcels that they're adding to here. They're over two acres each parcel, uh, so they're adequate in order for them to have, um, septic, um, and well water. Uh, this area does not have, currently does not have water to the property, but there might be possibilities of working of getting easements if they need to. I'll let the applicant, uh, talk about it a little bit more. But however, staff did recommend approval for this, um, development, uh, zone change to light industrial. And, uh, P N Z did give approval to this development, voted five to zero, on March twentieth of twenty twenty-five. So I'm now open for any questions. If not, I'll let the applicant speak on this part.
So, any questions for Ms. Shaughnessy on this? So we will go ahead and continue with our open hearing here. Have our presentation.
Andrew Mellon, Maverick Engineering, nineteen ninety-nine West Wall Street, I'm representing the clients. Um, yes, we're trying to turn this land into light industrial. Um, and she is right, there's twelve lots, twelve, two acres or plus or minus. We're gonna be phasing it out, obviously it's a lot to take on. So we'll do one lot at a time, maybe two, um, planning on building the buildings out, selling them or renting them out as most of what happens in our community as far as light industrial goes. Um, I'll, I, I don't wanna rehash what we've been all listening to for the last thirty minutes to an hour, um, but I would like to give it a different mindset, if you guys don't mind. We live in the, we live in an area where light industrial and heavy industrial is prominent. We live in oil industry, and there are rules and there are regulations we all have to follow when there are stored chemicals, like they have to be closed, they can't be open. City's code fourteen dash four says this, and it gives in the line items of what you have to follow if you're gonna store chemicals or anything like that. There's even T C Q codes on septic systems and how you're supposed to store and, and, and take care of those systems. So as far as spills go, things like that, it's gonna be very rare, especially in light industrial, and if they are, they have to be remediated immediately. And so it takes a while for any kind of soil contamination to get in the water levels. The other thing I'd like to also mention is, we have regulations regarding water. So if you have anything over twenty-four people on your property, you have to have a public water well, and then that has to be monitored, so you can publicly safely give that water to those individuals. So hopefully everybody around us has that public water well. Um, we're not gonna have the water to our site for a while. We're gonna hopefully work with the city on giving an easement on our, on our western side. And within that being said, until that water comes into play, everybody who's gonna be in this particular development, if they're twenty-four and over, gonna have to work on that water, on that public water well. If they're twenty-four people and under, they can actually then have an irrigation well, and hopefully they monitor it. But other than that, I just wanted to kinda give the, the council a little bit different view on, on what kind of industry we're in, and, um, all the rules and regu- all the rules and regulations we have to follow for those, for those particular items. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions for the speaker?
Donald Murray?
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm back.
Yeah. Welcome.
Welcome.
Same argument, I mean, these guys have got a, they've got a valid point, and we do need the growth in this community and what have you. Again, my concern is, once they develop these tracks and what have you, uh, there's no, there's nothing here that says what kind of chemicals or what quantities can be stored. I know we had a new ordinance or a new bill passed here recently that will help us in those endeavors and what have you, but, uh, currently, we don't have a plan to handle these spills and this contamination. And, and I'll say it again, you know, I've been in this industry for forty-five years plus, and it's just not a matter of if it's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, and what have you. And, uh, that's, that's my plan. I, I would ask you, Mr. Haney, have you complained about the air quality on this site?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Larry Robinson.
By the way, if you look at the maps, this property shares property line with the other property we were speaking to, so anything that happens on that property is probably married to this one and vice versa. And this was previously a well site and has a hole well right in the middle of it, and used to have some drain pits and, uh, cliche pits that were bulldozed in right in that area. Uh, this housing site lies immediately to the west of and attaches to a former railroad track site that was used for parking chemical tank cars that were stationary. These cars were used for storage and mixing and blending of chemicals and sand. If a chemical release or leak event occurred, the entire water supply for the nearby existing business, as well as the proposed thirteen unit housing project, would be compromised. Before allows housing development to be built at this location, the city should know that furnishing water to these thirteen homes would come at a great cost. I saw this cost on a News West Nine printed article, said twelve to fifteen million for lift pumps to get water over there. If that were true, which it seems high, that would be over a million dollars a house to get water. So anything that tainted the water there, these people would be without water, and it would be the city's burden, because they're in the city limit, to take care of it and bear the expense of this. bear the expense of this. Is this tenable? I don't, I don't think so. A developer in Texas is required by law to provide water and sure to buyers of any lots that are less than five acres in size. That's the Texas Colenius Act to keep people from selling property without it. So, each one of these tracks is two and a half acres, it falls under the five acres, so being within the city boundaries, it would put it on the onus of the city to take care of the water and the sewer. And in repeat of what I said earlier, in the last twenty-four hours, Land Grass Bill, H. Bill thirty-eight sixty-six passed, that was introduced, and it's going to change in the, and that's all due to air quality. And now, we're talking about water quality and migration over the land, and the water studies there, and I think Chris on the other one said that it had been remediated, but in all of the, all of the refreshments of the original environmental, it said anybody looking at this property needs to drill extensive number of wells. There'd been two wells drilled by the diesel, diesel tanks and no others. That property is not investigated. They don't even know which way the water table flows under there, east, west, north or south, Mr. Thompson. Anyway, the city must ensure that sustainable water and sewer are available before allowing homes to be constructed on this abandoned well site. Doing less would be a disservice to the tenants and the citizens and taxpayers of Odessa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I don't think this is housing.
This is not housing.
Pardon?
Yeah, they're not building housing.
They're not building houses.
What are, what are these?
These are industrial.
Pardon?
Light industrial.
Are they light industrial? They're not, okay, they're not.
Yeah, they're not building.
Early on, I was told it was being bought for workforce, but, okay, we'll put the laws of Colenius aside, but still, you know, should they receive contamination from the site next door, it would still burden the city with the expense of that and each and every taxpayer. Thank you for correcting me on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Michael Ashton?
Bill thirty-eight sixty-six has passed the House, it's going to the Senate, and I don't think you can have any livable part of it, you can't have anything livable within two thousand feet. I mean, I don't know what.
That was passed yesterday, right?
Huh?
That passed yesterday?
I think so.
But these are industrial. These are not housing. Mr. Robinson's misinformed.
Was anybody going to be living over there?
I asked the Dillmas Development, there's light industrial.
Nobody's going to be living.
Nope. All right, so any, that's all for public comment, so we will close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Number eleven, we are going to open a public hearing to consider the vehicle for higher franchise application of Ronald Lynn Wilkerson, Sr., MGM Transportation, Chief Kirkie.
Good afternoon, good evening now.
Good night.
Right.
This is simply a request by Ronald Lynn Wilkerson, Sr., to open a taxi service that is residence at two twenty-one Orchard. This is a one-vehicle taxi service, and he has met all the requirements set forth by the city and passed his background check.
Is he present?
I don't know.
Mr. Wilkerson? I guess not.
Explain to me what the vehicle for higher franchise is.
It's a taxi. It's basically a one-person, one-vehicle taxi service. So, he's going to use his cellphone as his business phone and receive those calls for pickups from his cellphone, and then he will proceed to that location and take that, the client wherever they want to be dropped off, yes.
He has marked card, right? It says taxi?
Absolutely. That is part of the, that's part of the ordinance, yes.
How does, how does that work as far as our chief of police been, I mean?
He has to get some type of background checking.
It's in the ordinance to follow. Secretary, Chief of Police.
We could certainly change that.
And counsel, finally counsel.
You're the voter?
I guess so.
Okay.
So, here we are.
I just didn't understand what, how it came into play.
That's always the interesting conversation, because you don't know who the Uber drivers are.
Right. I have no idea.
So, I'll, I'll call Mr. Wilkerson before we get into Uber.
That sounds better than me.
Yeah. Any, any questions of Chief?
I'd say we, I trust the chief on his background for the individual. He's followed all the steps that he's been requested, and move to approve.
Second?
Okay, so we will. Do we have anybody to participate in the public hearing? Mr. Wilkerson, all right, so we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Connell and second by Councilmember Haney. I see what the mayor deals with up here. All right, so I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Resolution twelve, consider authorizing Odessa Fire Rescue to accept, appropriate, and authorize expenditures from Texas J. Regional Advisory Council in the combined amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
We're almost there. Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilman. This is a re-crediting grant that we apply for every year through our state for Texas J. Rack. This year, if we get the blessing, we will receive twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. We use this for various non-budgeted items and EMS equipment. And we just, we are fortunate for this, we are participants of the J. Rack, meet their participant requirements and their, all their other requirements, so.
Very good.
Asking to receive some money.
Yep. Yay. Instead of spending, you're getting.
Move approval. All right, we've got a motion. Councilmember Thompson?
I'll second.
We'll give it to Mr. Mitchell. All right, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thirteen, consider a text-out agreement for a temporary street closure. This is Fandango, be nice.
Good evening, Protem Mayor and Counsel. This agreement is for fire tracker Fandango, consider a text-out agreement for a temporary and street closure. With this agreement, allows the city to close the text-out right-of-way for public events from second to sixth on grant.
Okay, any questions on this? It's something we've done every year. Formality. Any questions?
I have a question, but not supposed to. Have we decided what kind of show we're going to do yet?
Different item. Have to get Ms. Elizabeth up here.
I'm just saying, are we thinking about? Me and her kind of had a conversation.
We know it's going to be country.
Well, I'm talking about up in the air.
Open air.
There can be lots of shows. We're going to have a whole show.
I love, I love any kind of live music. I think a person has talent.
Well, we got to close the street first, how about that? Need a motion to close the street text-out agreement. So moved. Councilmember Connell, we'll give it to him.
There's no way he beat me on it.
I don't, we'll figure it out. So, I got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Now, you got your streak to line dance on, you got a whole shutdown streak y'all can get out there and line dance on out there.
Line dancing under the fireworks.
Exactly.
What? You've heard of such a thing. All right. Fourteen, consider approving the water agreement with the Odessa Country Club. And I've lost my, I don't know who's presenting this. It's Richard.
Mayor Protem, Counsel. Currently, we have three different agreements with the Odessa Country Club dating back to nineteen ninety-two for the sale and purchase of raw water, reuse water, and this is an attempt to take those three different agreements and put them into one agreement. It's, like I said, we've been selling water to the Odessa Country Club since nineteen ninety-two. They were one of our original reuse customers. They actually did us a favor by stepping up and signing to take that. I know most of you were not around, and I certainly wasn't, but back at that time, the city was sued, and we were forced to be cool and green before green was cool. We had to come up with a reuse program. And as a result, we sold, we started looking for reuse customers, and like I said, Country Club was an original reuse customer. So, their pricing dates back to nineteen ninety-two, and with this contract, we helped clean this up and started another, basically, this agreement is for twenty years with two ten-year options. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, we won't be talking about this again for another twenty years?
You will not.
Thirty, forty.
We have cost escalations built into the contract from day one every year. Whatever increase we get from CRMWD, we'll pass fifty percent of that on to the Country Club. If the price from the CRMWD goes down, we do not pass that on. We don't, we don't reduce their cost. We just keep it steady what it was. So, any increase, we pass on fifty percent of, and again, in the thirty years that we've had this contract or thirty-plus years, CRMWD has actually dropped the rate one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, about twelve times in that timeframe, and as a result, again, we're not passing that decrease on to the Country Club, okay? It just, whatever that was the previous year, it stays flat. But when we do get the increase, we do pass that on. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Country Club has approved the agreement?
They have.
Yeah. And the good part about it, they've been a good partner, because when Pioneer came to us calling for that reuse water, they worked with us on that agreement, and that has resulted in a lot of money for the city of Odessa.
That's true. The Pioneer Agreement allowed us to make a lot more money on that reuse water and basically ask the Country Club to work with us on that because of the existing contracts, and they were very gracious to do that.
I would move, I would move approval.
Counsel, we have a speaker card.
Oh, yeah, speaker card.
Chris Crowe.
Honorable Mayor Protem, Distinguished Counsel, thank you for your time this evening. I'm actually just looking for a little education on this item. I was going from the ordinance. Thank you so much, Mr. Morton, that, there's a lot of clarification, and I do have a couple of other questions. So, one question that I have is, it looks like we are combining three contracts. Will the contract, the new contract origination date, so the start of the twenty years, will it be now or the last contract date of twenty twenty-two?
It'll be now.
Okay. So, that'll be twenty years and then two possible ten-year additions.
Correct.
So, you said over the prior terms, we've had nine rate cuts. What was the most recent rate on the last contract per thousand?
Lately, we've been charging them a dollar seventy-seven per thousand gallons.
And the new contract rate would be?
A dollar fifty.
And so, what, and I like the step up with no going back, but contrary to what you just said, it looks like we're going to back up from a dollar seventy-seven to a dollar fifty now. What's the thought process on that?
That's a great question. When I looked at the contract dating back to nineteen ninety-two, the first twenty years saw a thirty percent, if CRMWD raised our rates, we passed on thirty percent of that, okay? And at the end of that twenty-year period, it went up one point nine percent each year for the next ten years, and then the third, and then the, the next ten-year period which we're in now, went up to that fifty percent. So, it ratcheted up. But if I did the math and went all the way back to nineteen ninety-two and applied that formula, the rate that, that I show we should be charging was a dollar forty-six, okay? So, I'm just taking it back to that original formula.
Thank you for that clarification. The only other thing that I didn't really like about the contract is I really don't like the twenty-year contract, because I think, as we've seen in the past, we don't know what the future's going to bring, and we're really hamstringing future councils and committees and all of that moving forward. I really don't like to see us do contracts longer than five years at a time, just because things do change. For example, one of the things that I would also suggest that we put in the contract is basically an out for us in the event that we get into another drought-type situation, and I understand this is refuse and this is reuse water, but with the advancements in technology that we're already seeing in the oil field, we can, we can take oil field produced water and just about make it drinkable today. Not quite, but we're there. And I think with future advancements in technology, that's a possibility, and, Mr. Morton, you and I have been through one of those droughts before, and we're looking for other options at that point in time, but having an out would be good. And if, so either, if we're going to continue with a twenty-year contract, and I know you're dying to tell me something, I would like to see an out built into the contract.
Sure.
Or if not, I would really encourage us that maybe we just look at this at five-year automatic renewals, just to give our future councils some pivot room.
Yeah, I'll answer your question, and then it's up to them if they want to change the term. Of course, we'd have to talk to the Country Club as well. There is language in the contract that talks about our drought contingency plan, and that if we enforce it, it impacts their use of that water. We're not limiting other water sources that they may have, but we're letting them know that that source could be curtailed, so that's built into the contract.
Excellent.
Okay. Also, there's language in the contract that says, basically, let's see if I can find it real quick, which I think you will probably like. Let's see. Gosh. It's basically, help me out, Dan, you know what I'm looking for?
I do.
Okay. Hold on. Availability. Gosh, I didn't think to mark that part. But basically, the city has the right.
I was going to say, what you're talking about is that three-point-four conditions in there? The language in there, talking about the city has the right to serve its citizens first?
That's correct.
Yeah, I believe that's what you're.
Good. Sounds like you have it, and all I had to reference was the ordinance, hence asking for the education, and I appreciate that very much.
The Country Club's been very good to negotiate with on this deal, and the city attorneys did a good job as well. But the city has built in protections for the city, and of course, they've negotiated protections for, for the Country Club as well. So, I think we're covered, but I think the Country Club would obviously prefer to lock in a long-term contract so that they can plan their future, and that's why it was originally done at that twenty years with the, with the two ten-year options.
And I saw that, and at some point in there, a past council moved them to, I think, a one-year contract with automatic twelve months, which I thought was probably a little too short.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I'll tell you where I got that from. On December thirty-first, two thousand one, purchaser Club Mission Dorado undertook an assignment with the assumption of fluent reuse contract wherein Mission assigned to purchaser and city consented to the assignment of affluent reuse contract. No, I'm sorry, that's still twenty years, give me just one sec, my apologies. I'm so sorry.
I believe that's when the Odessa Country Club bought Mission, and the assignment of the contract went from Mission to the Country Club.
Here it is. Whereas on October twenty-fourth, two thousand three, city and purchaser entered into a raw water contract which had a twelve-month term, which was automatically renewed for a subsequent twelve-month term unless otherwise terminated. That's where I got that from, so I'm sorry about that.
That's, that's, like I said, they, there's three different contracts. There's reuse, there's raw water, and there's the assignment contract, so.
Love pulling these three together. Thank you very much for the clarification. Again, I like shorter contracts, that's just me, but thank you for the education.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions from speakers? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Councilmember Thompson, second from Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item fifteen, we are going to consider authorizing publication- At 1:15, we are going to consider authorizing publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation. This is Mr. Morton.
This is mine, too, and I'm going to invite George Wilford up, and he's going to walk us through the procedure and the calendar for the necessity to issue certificates of obligation. And what you're seeing on your screen is the proposed sports complex. What we're going to be talking about tonight is the need to issue $40 million in certificates of obligation to help fund the sports complex out in the Park Spel Ranch area. The total project amount is $130 million. We've identified $90 million in fund reserves out of general fund and hot funds to be tor, put for, I'm sorry, to be put towards the project. That leaves $40 million that we need for construction, and thus the need for the $40 million in certificates of obligation. With that, I'll turn it over to George.
Mayor Protem and members of the council, for the record, George Wilford with Hilltop Securities. We serve as financial advisor to the city. And what you have before you tonight, as prepared by Glen Opal at Bracewell Law Firm, who serves as bond counsel to the city, is a resolution to publish notice of intent or intention to issue certificates of obligation. And if that resolution is passed, what that would mean is then, as you'll see, according to the timetable, there would be mandated or required publication of that notice as well as posting it on your website, which would ultimately lead to a date of action. This is the calendar associated with that. As you see tonight, the council's meeting to consider the resolution. There has to be two publications exactly one week apart, and so what you'll see is Friday, May 23rd and Friday, May 30th are the latest dates that those publications of the notice can occur. In all likelihood, Ms. Aguilar will be working, and that'll initiate sooner than that. You'll see an ongoing line there about discussion and finalization of terms. The specific transaction, I'll get into that in a minute, is a direct placement with commercial bank, and so in reality, most of the terms are all worked out. It's a matter of council, bond counsel, city attorney, and council of the bank just formalizing the documents and getting those all in order to come back to the council. And you can see that date, that would be at least the 45 days after those latest dates, is July 8. That's the first regular meeting, and that's the one that's designated in the resolution. And the notice that this would come back to council for authorization and approval of sale. If the certificates of obligation are sold and approved at that night by August 7th or thereabout, early August, the funds would be available because the Attorney General would have given approval for closing. As Mr. Morton said, and as the resolution notice indicates, it's a maximum amount of $40,500,000. In reality, the costs of issuance that we have estimated now, and hopefully that'll even come down a little bit, is $225,000. So $40 million is project proceeds plus the costs for legal and other associated issuance-related expenses. The transaction with, and it's with Frost Bank, is a direct placement that has a 10-year final stated maturity, but it's based on a 20-year amortization once principal payments begin. First two years, 2026 and 2027, will be interest-only, and that really ties to construction of the project and point in time when revenues will be being generated. And then the amortization will begin March 1st of 2028. The final maturity, and you'll see it's more or less a balloon or bullet-type maturity, is in March 1st of 2036. The big feature about this that's good and important is that this, these COs can be prepaid at par, no penalty or anything associated, beginning March 1, 2028. So once the city is in a position to get its ratings and so on back in place and access the market, this three-year call feature would enable to position to go out to the market and refinance these certificates preceding this principal payments even really beginning. This is at 5%. You can see the 20-year amortization would result in combined principal and interest of 3.18 million or thereabouts per year. And like I said, hopefully, that will not occur based on the planned refinancing. And this would be March 1, 28, if the city went out and went to market at interest rates that were equivalent to rates today. And you can see that would be about a 4.63% effective rate. Based on the desired 30-year repayment, the annual debt service will be about 2.6, a little bit over a million per year. For sensitivity purposes, we also, just to be ultra-conservative, said, well, what if interest rates or yields in that case were 100 basis points higher at that point in time? Not lower, not as good. The refinancing still would be worthwhile from a debt service standpoint, but you can see if the yields are raised, the effective rate would be around 5.5% in that case, but still, the, on the 30-year repayment, debt service would drop to about 2.87 million per year. So that's the benefit now, with the audits still in process, the rating situation, this direct placement enables going ahead and proceeding with the project, having the funding, combined equity, and debt in place to initiate the project. And like I said, with the short call feature, gives the advantage that it can be refinanced and placed on what would be the actual ultimate desired repayment term. But with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So is there any penalty for early payoff? Say we have the money to pay this off early? Is that something that we could do or no?
March 1, 2028 is that prepayment or call date, in essence. So as that date or later, principal can be paid with no penalty.
I was just getting clarification.
Yes, sir.
Just making sure I heard it right.
If we refinance it, George, or refund it, and we're into the 30-year payout, is there a prepayment penalty for that?
That would be a normal market issue. That would be what's assumed, that you'd take the bonds out into the market. And in most cases, the rule of thumb is 10-year par prepayment. Sometimes you can get that a little shorter. Now, that doesn't preclude the opportunity to actually pay, but before that point in time, what you'd have to do is create an escrow that would defees part of the debt until that call date, but a 10-year par call is standard in the market.
Depends on donations. That's what I'm saying. Thank you, too. That's what I was asking, man. But if we got to sit on it for two years, we sit on it for two years.
The thing, the thing about it, and as you know, Mr. Haney, I've been very involved in it, but according to some people, you know, we haven't raised any money, but that's not true. We've got, in fact, I brought Mr. Morton a check today. We deposited in the foundation. And so we have probably 300, no, we have 500,000 plus in the, in the account now. We have commitments for another 9 million, which contracts are being drawn currently. Our sports consultant has secured contracts with Coca-Cola and Pittsburgh Paints. It's national sponsors. They're moving along pretty fast. Our local sponsors are getting their contracts and placement of their information on the sports complex where they want them. Danny Sports is working on that currently. If you look at the cash flow of the project, which Mr. Morton and I worked very hard on, you will see that the project will, just cash flows, I mean, like it loses $40,000 a first year, maybe. And with the extra income from the hotel motel tax, which is, will be substantial, and we're considering, we can do a 2% venue tax, which a lot of the Scottsdale, Palm Springs, all these resort areas have a venue tax on the hotel rooms that people pay who are coming in for these events. There is no tax. There is no property tax included. There is no tax on the citizens of Odessa. In fact, if you look at the, George, if I'm not mistaken, if you look at the agreement, it says these are not, these obligations are not property tax guaranteed.
The certificates will be secured by an ad verum tax, but the repayment.
But yourself, yeah.
The repayment can come from available sources. So that's one reason for the two-year of interest, only allow a ramp up, but if there are tournament and generated revenues out there, other sources and whatever, those can all be applied. And kind of to expand on what Mr. Thompson and Mr. Haney have asked, if there's sizable contributions that come in before March of 2028, then those monies can be utilized, like I said, through an escrow arrangement to downsize this debt and defees it and get it literally off the books, or any amount of it. And if it's sitting there March 1, 2028, then instead of refinancing 40 million, you'd finance whatever net might be.
But this will be, I guess, the best way to explain, I probably will say it wrong. I said that wrong, but the, it's kind of like an enterprise fund that we have for water and sewer, right, Richard?
Yes, sir.
It produces its own revenue.
Yes. I put the two different pro formas on here, if you want to see those. We can do that. They're there if you want.
It's the rest of the council's decision. I've seen them. I've been through them a thousand times.
Do you need this?
Yeah.
She's got it.
So.
And by the way, the company that ran these numbers for us, a company called Edge, they are probably going to be the operator. And the first set of numbers we got from the first company that we were using Centurion when Mayor Hendrick was elected, and this is, this is as much his baby as mine now because he wants to get it done and get started. And that's the reason we got to looking around. Cal said, we've got to have some money laying around. We can put some cash in this thing. The company we were trying to use, Centurion, it was, it was the most convoluted thing you'd ever seen. And I think George will agree with that. It was going to cost us a lot of money, and the city was still fully at risk for the bonds they were going to float. And they turned out, they would, they would actually turn into certificates of obligation. So we decided not to go that way. There were too many hoops to jump through, and we don't have a bond rating, which some of the past people said it wasn't important to have one. And so we're trying to get that back. Ladies and finance are working their tails off to get that done for us. If we wait till that's done to start the project, it'll be well into 2026.
Yeah.
Before we can even break ground in. And Mayor Hendrick and I both are adamant about it. We got to get it up and running. People are expecting it, and we have, you know, we're putting in 90 million cash. And by the way, for the public's knowledge, the city still retains six months of operating expenses that were only required to keep 90 days. We've got six months, and so this cash is free and clear and, and will not cause us any problems. So we think it's a very good viable option, and we can, and Frost has been great to work with. Their bond counsel's been working with George to work all this out, and they, they've just been, by God's sake, they've been wonderful to work with and understand the project and very on board.
This first pro forma just shows that if you didn't refund in the first 10 years, just carried the Frost numbers for the whole 10 years, at the end of the 10 years, it would cash flow $5.4 million that you could use towards other improvements in the park system. This does include a million dollars a year in sponsorships, so 10 million. Also, these numbers do not include the 2% hotel venue tax revenue that would raise about 1.9 million. So if you were able to do that, that would need to go to the voters. But again, it's a, it's a, it's a hotel tax on visitors to the community, not a tax on residents. That would just add to that 5.4 million.
Yeah. We're estimating that at about 1.9 million.
Yeah. If you did refinance, then you can see that, how that improves the dollars at the end of the 10 years. It takes it roughly to about $10.2 million that you could use for other parts of the park system for the city.
Yeah. Or reducing debt or whatever.
Right.
Do whatever we want with it. This is a, this is a revenue, a good revenue stream for us in the long run.
And again, that's not counting the 1.9 million for the venue tax. If for some reason the facility revenues don't pan out, you're still a good shop. You really. So on the expense side, they do, they do build in a, or we do, a reserve to, to help offset any, any expenses, any additional expenses.
Right. And then, of course, the future hotel motel tax, you know, should increase substantially, so anyway.
The future's so bright, I'm going to have to wear shades.
So it's a, I think it's a long-term project that the community's wanted for years, and this is an opportunity to make it happen. And the indirect, from the feasibility study, the indirect benefit, economic benefit to the community is about $60 million a year.
That's, that's essential. So anyway, it's, it's pretty exciting. We've got, we're building steam every day with people wanting to participate, and so I'd encourage the rest of the council to talk to your constituents and companies in your zones, Mr. Haney. We're looking for people to put signs up.
Yes, sir.
So anyway, but that's, that's all going very well. So we've got a bunch of commitments already, and putting money in the bank. That's the good news. Mr. Bell's been very generous to work with.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm just so glad it finally got to this where we can just say, start building, please start building.
And that's the whole idea about these certificates, because by September the 1st, we can be putting a shovel in the ground. That's the whole idea.
I'll go out there and put a shovel in the ground, too, for a change.
Yeah, I get it.
But I ain't doing the plumbing on the things.
We got a plumber. We got a plumber.
Counsel, we do have two speaker cards.
So I had a comment before we did that, and, you know, that is something that I had questioned and, and wanting to make sure that the, the future of this thing, you know, you've seen it a lot where we build these big things and don't plan for the future, so I'm glad to see.
Get this out of my hands.
Future maintenance done.
Right.
But that the over and above gets put back into the park system to help everybody in Odessa, because again, I don't know that every child in Odessa will have the opportunity to play on these fields.
Well, but they, they really will because during the week.
I understand that, but you understand what I'm saying. There's an opportunity to improve things for every Odessin.
I agree with that.
And by making this investment with their money, you know, we, we should be able to give back all over the city.
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm glad to hear that's, that has been thought of. And George, you make and help me with this, kind of a little language clarification, and I know I'd asked Richard earlier. So going through the general obligation and the refunding and the revenue bond, you know, I know a revenue bond's something different than a general obligation bond. Why do a GO rather than a revenue bond, or help me understand all of that.
Actually, we're suggesting a CO, certificate of obligation.
Oh, so see, I'm over here looking at general obligation. So yeah, just clearing up the language. Help me understand.
General obligation debt is secured by ad verum tax. Certificates of obligation also secured by ad verum tax. Straight revenue bonds are secured only by an established revenue source, typically a utility system or whatever. In this case, it's all on a pro forma basis. There are not established revenue stream, and so from a credit standpoint, and also getting Attorney General's approval because. Attorney General's approval, because the Attorney General requires that if you're doing straight revenue debt, it has to be an established source that has a margin for repayment and so on. So there wouldn't really be the opportunity to finance this project on a straight revenue basis. But like most, or a lot of general obligation bonds even, but certificates, they're issued for purposes that are going to generate revenues. And in those cases, the revenues can be used for debt service where there is no tax imposed.
Okay. Thank you. I know we talked about it before.
Yeah.
I knew there was-
By the way, the Odessa Sports Foundation has contributed into part of this project. They put 300,000 in, and that's going into the, the Amy Little Memorial Park.
Right.
And our people are going to be involved in that. So it only makes sense that money comes back to them, okay?
Right. No, I don't disagree. I'm just saying that-
I'm just trying to help you make sure you understand what I'm saying.
I agree.
So that, that plus the fact that we'll have these donations, we get enough donations, then that will be there for repairs and maintenance and so forth. Besides, besides what we're-
Yeah. That's all I'm saying. If we go over, above, and beyond what we need, and we're still bringing in $10 million, you can't pitch a million dollars back to the Odessa parks?
Absolutely.
Come on. Give a little. So, okay, those are my two questions. Norma, I believe you said we had two speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
Did we have, before we move on to that, any other questions for George or Richard from council? All right.
Okay. Chris Crook?
Need candy for this?
Again, Honorable Mayor Pro Tim, Distinguished Counsel, thank you for your time. So again, looking for a little education here. And I heard you comment on it, Councilman Thompson. So how much money to date has been put into the foundation through contributions?
How much?
Yes, sir. Total contributions have we put in the bank so far?
Uh, three, four, five million.
Excellent. And how much do we have committed for future?
Another, probably another 10.
Excellent. Thank you so much for answering those questions. I think you guys have done a great job of explaining, and I championed sports complex from word go. The question that I have is, the information that you just gave was so great. Why are we not giving that information to the voters of Odessa and letting them vote on this versus us doing certificates of obligation and taking that opportunity for them to participate away from them? You know, I've always been a champion of there's no tax without a vote. So before we answer that question, I'm going to come back to that, which is, I've got one question I think will help. What's going to be the change in the Odessa tax rate by passing this? It will go from, and I don't know what the current number of cents is per thousand or whatever.
Do you want that first?
Please, please, yeah, thank you.
As proposed, this will have no impact on the tax rate. Okay?
So again, a little education. So explain to me how that is. We're, you know, we're creating 40 million. You've got 3.1 million basically a year in interest. Do we have enough excess of operating revenue to cover that?
Yeah. And Chris, I'd be happy to sit down with you and share this pro forma with you also. It's, it's done. The debt payment is, if you look on year one, it's 3.14 million dollars. The facility revenues with the million-dollar donation is 5.6, the expenses are 2.47. I'm sorry. The net profit is 3.14 million. And then the debt payment on this scenario is 1 million, okay, for that first year? So you've got a profit there, $2 million, after you pay the debt. Okay? Now, the debt goes up the next year, and that profit goes down at the end of the year to 4.00, to 436,000. So at no point do you need to go to the taxpayers to pay this debt, because the facility's revenue are going to pay that even after expenses. In addition to that, and you've heard me talk about, can we back it up one? Okay. This is if the debt is higher at Frost, if we don't refinance it or refund it. Then we're looking at $3 million in debt, and that, and you are going to see a loss that year, that first year, of $40,000. And all along, we've been talking about, you can fund any deficit from the hot funds that will be generated from this facility. So that first year, we're going to dip into the hot funds to break even. So again, no impact on the taxpayers, property taxpayers. Does that answer that question?
It, it does.
Okay.
Just to kind of tag along with that for right now, and I thank you again for the education. Are you foreseeing over the next couple of years, and I know I'm asking you to look at your crystal ball, any other things that are impacting the city? Because the reason why I'm asking is we're taking 70 million out of free cash flows-
Yeah.
-that could affect, that could make our city tax rate go up?
Sure. I mean, it's, it's a matter of priorities, okay? So I think it could be argued a couple of different ways, okay? We, we are sitting on the city through good financial management. Over the years, we've built up that fund balance over and above the six months. Again, required 90 days. The council, years and years ago, adopted an additional 90 days. So now we have a six-month rainy day fund, which is above what is required. Above that six months, we have an estimated 87,000, 87 million. If you look at that conservatively, it could be less than that. But that's money that, in my opinion as city manager, we need to spend on behalf of the citizens of Odessa.
Agreed.
These people, I said on council, they're elected, they get to choose the priorities, but they won't spend that on. And for this project, they'd like to spend of that-
87.
87, 75 million on the sports complex. And then over in hot funds, we have a budget of, not a budget, we have fund reserves of $20 million. They're also going to take 15 of that and put it towards that 75, that gives you that 90.
Mm-hmm.
So again, I think they will to the taxpayers to spend that on this project or others. Are there other needs out there? Absolutely. Geez, back there, we probably need to build two new stations and replace three existing ones. So there are those.
My concern was, you know, we get into another big water main break facility. You know, do we have the funds there to cover that type of thing without going to the-
Sure.
You know, I don't want to just look back and then say, you know, we raised taxes, but it wasn't for the sports center. It wasn't for the certificates of obligation-
Sure.
When it could be-
You can come up with any scenario, Chris, but a water line break is really funded out of our Water Utilities Enterprise Fund, which is a separate business within the city.
Yes, sir.
And it's got a healthy fund balance as well. And we plan to build a water tower and infrastructure on the north side of town that's very much needed, and pay cash for that as well. So the, the city has a lot of needs. And paying our employees is one of those, making sure that they're well taken care of.
Agreed.
So I can't sit here and say the council's not going to ever raise taxes. I think they're going to need to raise taxes to meet all the needs. But this particular project will not cause a rate increase.
So one final question, and I'll, I'll leave you guys alone. So again, I said, because it, do we still have a choice? We can issue certificates of obligation, or we can take this to the voters to vote for it?
Yeah, just going to answer that question.
Thank you.
So when a city issues certificate, or issues a notice of intent, okay, that's exactly what the action we're asking council to take today. That triggers a timeframe. I think it's 45 or 46 days, where the citizens can look at that, they can, they can evaluate it, and if they want to, they can petition for an election. That's, that's the law, that's within their right. So it's not that we're not asking the citizens, they have the right to petition, to call an election.
Okay. So again, I know I'm taking a little more time, but I promise I'll go away. Thank you guys for indulging me. On the petition process, you know, while that petition's there, you know, sometimes you see petitions, but, you know, the requirements to get the petition, get it passed, and the timeframe is so arduous that it just doesn't happen. Can you give me a little information on that petition process so that as we move forward into this, I know that we're petitioning the council now for the ability to move forward? And we're just going to start a clock at that point?
Sure.
So can you, can you elaborate that for me?
Sure. I believe it's 5% of the registered voters who would be the required now. Is that right? Okay?
Thank you.
And again, the clock starts. You've got 45 days to get that in and get them signed over to the city secretary's office to make sure that there's a good petition.
Excellent. Thank you so much again for the education. Again, I don't like certificates of obligation. You guys have heard me say that many, many, many times. If, if it's going to go to a debt-type situation, creating debt for the city, which is owned by the city, the citizens should get a vote on it. Thank you.
One more comment.
Yes, sir.
We can't go to the citizens with certificates of obligation because we don't have a bond rating.
And, well, no, no.
So you did remember that. Especially when you're posting on Facebook and all that. You need to remember that.
Oh, I remember. And I remember why we don't have a bond rating. But I think that's a discussion for probably another time.
It is, but you need to remember that.
Oh, I, I very much remember. And I remember-
So do I.
I remember who was here for five years during that period.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't respond-
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Good to have you out.
Mayor Pro Tim, counsel, I'm Dallas Kennedy. Mine will be very short. I guess I hurt somebody's feeling when I called the previous funding a Ponzi scheme that was probably unfair. But maybe somebody could just give us once and for all a very, very 30-second Cliff Notes version of what was wrong with the Centurion contract. I would just like to know. And that, that's it, I'll sit down and listen.
No, that's fine.
You want me to, or?
Yeah, you go ahead. You can say it more succinctly probably than I can.
I don't think there was anything wrong with the Centurion contract. The, the previous council, under their direction, found a way, working through Centurion, not to issue debt themselves. They were, the city is still on the hook if Centurion issues that debt. Going through Centurion probably cost the city more if we would have gone that way. That's not bad on Centurion in any way. They're out there providing a service to cities that may want to take that route. The, the contract with Centurion going that route did become complicated because the city, the land was donated to the city by Mr. Bell, very generously, for the project. Then we were going to have to turn around and lease it to Centurion for the development and the build-out. And then it was going to be leased back to us, and then leased back to them, and then leased to the sports foundation. So it's very complicated. This is a lot less complicated. And as a result, I think overall, we'll save the citizens money to do it this way.
I have a follow-up on that. You said a contract with Centurion. Did we have a contract with Centurion?
It was an MOU.
A memorandum of understanding.
That's as far as it went.
Non-binding MOU that was a framework-
That's right.
-for a future-
Yes.
-agreement. So we did not have, we'd never hired Centurion to do anything, correct?
Well, we, we have to a degree that we're on the hook for, for certain things that they have done. And I believe Mr. Morton is working on that right now.
But they hadn't been hired to go issue the bonds or sell the bonds-
No.
-or provide the money, or show up and build a sports complex, or-
Nope.
Okay.
Any of that, no.
No one in their purview anyway.
No, it wasn't. And-
And we didn't have a, again, back to the bond rating. They couldn't issue bonds because we didn't have a bond rating.
I know. Well, I mean, just as long as we're taking a minute to clear things up.
No.
Yeah.
No, not at all. And what no one understood is that Centurion, all through last year, they never went out to a bond, to someone to issue the bond. They never could, they never could, would, for whatever reason. And so basically-
But if we didn't have an agreement with them, why would they?
They, they couldn't go out and issue the debt because they were depending on our bond rating.
Yes. They were depending on us, our bond rating.
Yeah. But again, I, to, to clear it up once and for all, there was no agreement. I mean, there was an agreement to make an agreement, but there was no money. There was no bonds, there was no-
Non-binding memorandum of-
Memorandum of understanding.
Sports complex fairy to-
Yeah. To magically-
They don't want to diminish Centurion.
No, I don't think that's Centurion at all. I, I think, like you said, they provide a service. They're good at it, have at it, but we didn't have an agreement with them to do that.
No, that's correct.
Not, yeah, not a binding agreement.
Nope.
That's my whole point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those, those bonds, had they done that,[1492.03] So those bonds, had they done that, went through all the leases that we had, this complicated process, they would've ended up being COs, correct, George? Or they would've been, they would've been an obligation of the...
They would've had, obviously, the city, talking to a prospective underwriter, and they would've had to have commitment of the city to market the debt. And it would've been viewed as a project financing, and the interest rate would've been much higher as well as the associated costs.
And it was all tied to the city's bond rating.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. So got our speakers. Any other questions for George, Mr. Morton? So this is, again, an item to direct staff to issue the notice. So I will entertain that motion.
I so move.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ogilvy.
Thank you, Mr. Ogilvy.
All right. We got all that done. Now we are going to discuss and consider all city VODSA commissions and board members, including appointments, reappointments, removing or modifying, and including the following: Board Survey, Historic Preservation Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Counsel, thank you. As you, as requested, you received a link where it had all the board applications on there. So I hope y'all were able to be able to open that. So that will stay current and ongoing change as I receive the applications. For the Board of Survey, we have Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember Haney that has a position. For the Board of Survey, we have applications: Bill Cleaver, Nancy Wells, Ramiro Salinas, and Kelly Cobb, who are interested in serving on that Board of Survey.
Just give us a name we want to put on there.
I'd like to put Nancy Wells on there.
Okay.
She's a good lady.
And what was the other names? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You got me.
Bill Cleaver, Ramiro Salinas, and Kelly Cobb.
Bill.
He's back. He can defend his position.
Okay.
All right. So we have nominations for Mr. Cleaver and Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
And for Board of Survey. So I will need a motion on that.
On a motion.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Cleaver, to another. Any other applications?
For the Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Thompson, we have some applications: Celeste Potter, Kelly Boydston, Ryan McGuire, Susan Gentry, Nancy Wells, and Kelly Cobb, and Christopher Alstrom. If any of those you're interested on appointing, or if you'd like to take your time to review them, we can bring them up next time.
Let's bring them up.
Okay. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have some applications. This would be an alternate, not a full member. So for the planning and zoning applications, we have John Herridge, Nancy Wells, and Ramiro Salinas. And Henry Enriquez as well.
I'm going with Henry Enriquez. Henry Enriquez, what's a motion?
Motion for Henry as the alternate?
If he's related to me, do I have to abstain?
How bad do you like him?
He can't be like a 15 or 16 down the line cousin.
I'm gonna abstain.
Really?
His mother's my first cousin. I abstain.
I have a motion and abstention.
Who was the second?
Do I have a second?
I got a second. Go ahead.
All right. So we got a motion and a second for Henry. One abstaining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
One abstention.
All right. And that was P and Z or ZBA?
P and Z.
Okay.
For Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have a vacancy. Councilmember Thompson, that's, you have a vacancy. And I'll list the one, and council has an alternate to fill. Applications, Bill Cleaver. You check mark off. John Herridge, Nancy Wells.
John Herridge.
For ZBA?
That's ZBA.
Let me see. I put Herridge on that. And then an alternate?
And then we need an alternate.
I put Nancy as the alternate.
Nancy as an alternate. And we'll wait on mayor when he comes back to let him do his appointment.
So the vacant position, John Herridge?
Correct.
And the vacant alternate, Nancy Wells?
Nancy Wells.
Thank you.
So I have a motion on that?
I so move.
Second.
We'll give it to Haney. All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right. Any more on boards, commissions?
No, sir.
Fun stuff. All right. So we will move on to executive session. So it's authorized by Texas Government Code 551 dot 07481 to deliberations about personnel matters. The city council may adjourn in the executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, and reassignment duties to disappoint or dismissal of a public officer or employee. The position of Associate Municipal Court Judge may have a motion to go into executive.
I so move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are now...
So move.
Second. All right, and all in favor?
Second.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. We have no action taken in executive, and Councilmember Connell has something to say.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Carlos Rodriguez to the position of Associate Municipal Judge.
I second that motion.
With the salary of one hundred and forty-four thousand.
Now we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now I think a motion to adjourn.
Congratulations, Carlos.
I said, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I so move.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Boom.